Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
First, we have Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, second by Counselor Neal. That council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting. Do you consider the following items? Item A, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, employment lands, and item B, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or the local board, employment lands.
Please vote. Can I, can I just get this on my screen, too? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting. We discussed a couple of files related to employment lands in the city. So I will ask for a motion to waive the rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, second by Counselor Shell. The council rise from the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting, and that the rules, the bylaw number 2010-1 be waived in the clerk report.
And that carries.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm and second by Counselor Shell, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute all necessary agreements and other documents as may be required to sell 546 Gardner's Road, consisting of approximately 4.42 acres, to Paul Cardosa for the sale price of $535,000, and a Forum SAS factory to the Director of Legal Services, and that the net proceeds from the sale of the property be deposited into the Industrial Lands Reserve
And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the added. We have an additional delegation, a motion of congratulations, and some tabling of communications. Can I have a mover, please, for the added? Moved by Counselor Neal, second by Counselor Turner. Still two people to vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you. I, Jim Neal, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of motion number four, since I own a property at 707 Alfred Street that adjoins the proposed development at 70 Barbara Avenue.
Thank you. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number 108, motion number two, as my spouse is an employee at Homebase Housing. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest or perceived pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion number two, as I'm a licensed realtor. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, will be abstaining from voting on report number 109 and new motion number four, as I'll be seeking further clarification from the Integrity Commissioner before voting on any planning matters.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause D, report number 107, as an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. I, Counselor Richard Allen, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause G, report 107, as my employer is engaged in contract with the St. Lawrence Park Commission to assist in the promotion of Lumina Borealis.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations conflict of interest? Okay, seeing none. We have no presentations tonight, but we do have several delegations. First, we have Vianney Acevedo, manager of the Street Health Centre, Kingston Community Health Centres, who will appear before council and speak to clause one of report number 108, received from the Chief Administrative Officer, recommend with respect to stationary sharps disposal bins for parks and walkways. And just a reminder for all of our delegations that you have five minutes. This Acevedo. Going once, going twice. Okay, so we will move on to delegation number two. Darren Delgleish, general manager and CEO, St. Lawrence Parks Commission, will appear before council and speak to clause G of report number 107, received from the Chief Administrative Officer, consent with respect to partnership with the St. Lawrence Parks Commission Lumina
Thank you, your worship. I assume I get the previous five minutes attached to my own as well?
Good try, good try.
Good evening, everyone, it's worship, your council. I'd like to introduce something to you this evening. It is something that the St. Lawrence Parks Commission has been working on for a couple of years now. One of our priorities at the St. Lawrence Parks Commission is to encourage economic growth in the tourism industry in seasons we like to call the shoulder season. The period of time between October and May is a very difficult time for many tourism operators, not to mention many business interests in the city. So, tonight, I'd like to present to you and introduce to you Lumina Borealis, which is arguably the largest winter event of its kind in Canada. So, do you remember your childhood winter? That's what we're doing here. There's over $3 million of investment in the best-in-the-production business Moment Factory. There's dozens of these folks from Montreal, spending day and night at Fort Henry right now as we speak, tearing down zombies on October 31st and building Lumina Borealis. What we're really after here is something not only to fill the gap in the marketplace, but we're trying to do it in a way that nobody in Canada can follow us. So this is not a Christmas event, it's a winter event. Moment Factory has a habit of changing cities. They change the economic fabric of these cities in times of the year where we really need it. So I'm very excited about this event. December 1st, you'll see, you'll start to see some advertisements trickle in. It's very calculated how we're going to do this. But a highly interactive, highly digital, obviously, we can't be putting drills and hammers into the fabric of the fort, so very creative manner that this, this event is being created. We're expecting anywhere between 60,000 and 120,000 people. And just to put it in perspective, other night walks, you saw some examples up there, have, have shown that they drive 200,000 and 300,000 people over a couple of months. Thank you. So essentially, what I'd like to introduce is not only the biggest winter event in Ontario, but arguably something that will put Kingston on the map in Canada, celebrating winter and our childhood winter. Thanks very much. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you. This is very exciting. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm curious about how much of your plans may or may not be dependent on weather. I know that both Quebec City and Ottawa have wonderful winter festivals that are very much weather impacted. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, well, frankly, I mean, we've prepared this, it's not weatherproof, but it's not dependent on weather. If it doesn't snow, we're gonna make it. We're going to make it snow. And that's not pulling the strings of Mother Nature, we've got some technology behind it, it's part of the investment I referred to.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, sounds fabulous. Is this then an evening nighttime event?
Yes, it's a nighttime event from 5:00 PM through till about 10:30, so it's largely projection and 3D architectural mapping. It relies on the darkness.
And, thank you, the fort in the summer has shops. Will this also have some stores that will be open at the same time?
Yes, my colleagues here, Director of Marketing Krista Doyle and Violet Hebert at Tourism Kingston, are looking after what we're calling the Welcome Hearth, so the upper part of the fort, the advanced battery, will be some type of gathering place, market, artisan kind of experience, where people can gather and prepare for their time slot to walk through their experience.
I have one question. So, is the idea that the experience would, could change from year to year, is the idea that you could go one time, but you might want to come, obviously, if you really enjoy it, then you might want to have a repeat experience, and so, so people could be drawn to Kingston year after year?
Yeah, most of the events, the investment, tangible asset investment, is digital. So the idea here is to dramatically change it every year. It doesn't rely on huge investments of physical assets. It's all in the digital programming and the way you projection map. When you drive up to the fort, if anyone feels so inclined, full of energy after council tonight, you'll see 40 different projectors mounted on scaffolding around the periphery of the interals of the fort, and those are high-intensity projection machines. So, simply, if, if you had the talent, you could create a completely new event. Every year, we plan to change it at least 50%. That's kind of our strategy with all of our events. This one's particularly easy because you don't have to wheel in new assets every year.
Awesome. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. This is a great idea, and I think it'll be great for tourism in Kingston. Can you tell me how much it would cost for, is there a youth pass, or is there an adult pass, and how long would it take to go through this event?
So we're thinking it's a, if you exclude the Welcome Hearth, which should be, depending on the weather, of course, people will spend more time there. It's about an hour to an hour and a half experience to walk through the inner ditches, and then culminate in the experience in the lower fort. I figure from the point at which people park and return to their car, it's about a two-hour experience. Pricing is still being nailed down, we should know that by the end of the week.
Okay, great. And is there busing, shuttle buses? I believe there was some talk of that.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on a concept with shuttling, and I believe council will hear something about that later tonight. Because this is not a fort event, we're trying to create something around the city, that we want people to gather in the city centre. Springer Market Square and around, you know, experience Lumina Borealis as part of a Kingston event. There'll be regular shuttles running from downtown to the fort and back, I believe, on a 15-minute cycle. Part of the reason is, there'll be so many people taking part in this event, our parking lot can only accommodate half, half of the number of cars necessary.
Great, okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. I'm gonna take you up on the offer to drive by, because I have to go by there anyways after work, sorry, after council work. Quick question, though, is it gonna be visible from the sky? Like, is this gonna be something, because I mean, basically, most of the city knows when the sunset ceremonies and all those things are on, because they can hear it or they can see it. So is this gonna be something where there's gonna be thought to projecting images up into the sky, so that people will actually be drawn to it, or could see it from, you know, quite a distance around, which would be essentially great advertising for it as well?
The idea is to have a clear channel right off the 401 to the fort. Part of the experience will be projections, including, you know, the bat symbol kind of concept, and I haven't seen it, it's being tested. Virtually every night, you see lights up there. At the very least, a large Lumina Borealis flag illuminated from the base that you'll be able to see from Confederation Basin.
So is that confirmation Batman will be there as well? Is that what I heard? Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our third delegation this evening is Willa Thayer, who will appear before council to speak to clause G of report number 107, received from the Chief Administrative Officer, consent with respect to the Universal Kingston Transit Pass One-Year Pilot Program of Ontario Works.
Thank you, good evening. Adults on welfare in Kingston badly need improvements to the transportation options. So the plan to offer all Ontario Works clients year-long bus passes, like those already given to high school queens and St. Lawrence students, is a great idea. The possibility that this program could begin in six weeks' time is also fantastic, because the winter is very hard of us, very hard on those of us on welfare, who depend mainly on walking or biking. Additionally, making bus passes a universal entitlement means that welfare clients won't be in the position to request one and potentially be denied it, as we are now. The proposed universal pass also addresses an important equity issue, where the $66 annual cost to be paid by Ontario Works to Kingston Transit is comparable to that paid by other adults, namely, Queens and St. Lawrence students. Currently, welfare recipients may purchase a $46 monthly pass, which adds up to $552 annually, and that money would have to come from a welfare recipient's annual income, which might be less than $9,000. Imagine trying to find money for a bus pass in such circumstances. The funding for the proposed program, $200,000, most of it from the Ministry of Community and Social Services, would represent more than 110 in increased revenue for Kingston Transit, and as Kingston city councillors, you have got to be for that. My one concern is that this new benefit might reduce the Employment Support Fund of some $340 earmarked for each welfare recipient, because tapping those monies made a very big difference to the quality of my life. Now, I'm going to tell you a bit about how this benefit would fit into my circumstances. During the past few years that I've been on welfare, I've walked hundreds of miles in Kingston, and some of that walking was on days when it was too cold for me. My earlier housing arrangement, as well as tutoring and proofreading piecework opportunities, required regular travel. Though I depend on a bike for transport, frequent bike breakdowns meant that I had to walk in the more warmer months, too. And though I have a high tolerance for hot weather, not everyone does. What I learned from that experience is that I have a daily number of miles that is reasonable for me to walk. My number is 2.5, but I had to walk double that, five times a week, and on the days that I had to visit the welfare office, I faced a seven-mile trek. Recently, I added up the number of miles that I walked on icy winter days, walking between my home and the place where I used a public access computer. I came up with more than 100, more than 100 miles on just the very cold and/or very icy days. That number makes me furious. So what's your number? Is it one? Is it two? Is it three? Whatever it is, double it. And imagine walking that far during the coldest two weeks of winter and the hottest two weeks of summer. Add carrying a few bags of groceries to some of those trips, and you'll get an idea of what a lack of transportation can be like in Kingston for able-bodied welfare recipients. Now, I've recently seen my circumstances improved, with temporary and very part-time work, some at minimum wage, some at higher rates. Earlier in my life, I earned a BA and an MA, and I learned Arabic well enough as an adult to perform a range of tasks. Getting to where I am now with work saw me do some 110 hours of volunteering over a six-month period, during which I made a positive contribution to this community while drawing on a unique skill set. If a dear friend hadn't been feeding me and doing a lot of other nice things, including offering me rides when I needed them, I wouldn't have been able to do that volunteering. Biking was and continues to be my main means of transportation, but the time and money I've spent on repairs has often been considerable, and added to those costs, I've been purchasing multi-ride bus passes to fill in the transportation gaps. My welfare story is just one of thousands in this city, stories of people seeking work, working part-time hours for minimum wage or a bit more, and contributing to this community in ways that might not be so visible to you and others. When you have such a low income, it would be comforting to know that you won't have to put any of it aside for transportation. Please make this proposal happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Are there any other delegations to add this evening? Counselor Neal?
Yes, the clerks have duly moved and seconded two requests for additional delegations. I believe that they have those in, to bring forward.
Can we just get that on the screen, please?
So it's moved by Counselor Neal, second by Counselor Stroud, that Mr. Rob Fonger be added to speak to report number 108, clause four.
108, clause four. Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries.
And I believe there's one other as well.
So we also have a, a motion to waive the rules to add Constance Adamson as a delegation. Is it the same? So that's also report number 108, clause four?
Yes, and that's seconded by Counselor O'Sannick.
Seconded by Counselor O'Sannick, okay. So we will call the vote.
And just by way of clarification, Constance Adamson may address the motion regarding the closure of Napier Street as well. So that was on the, identified on the request.
Okay. So are there, seeing no other delegations to add then, so I will first invite Mr. Rob Fonger to address council with respect to report 108, clause four, with respect to declaring surplus and disposing municipal property, being the market housing and affordable housing blocks on the southern portion of 671 Brock Street.
Mayor Patterson, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Rob Fonger, a 40-year resident of the Sunnyside neighborhood, our neighborhood. My children and grandchildren attended St. Joe's until recently. The property has been the playground for my 10 grandkids as well. Our neighborhood was initially concerned about the fate of this school site when closure was announced, but breathed a sigh of relief when the newspaper confirmed the purchase of the site by the city for Parkland in June. So we were unpleasantly surprised when we learned of council's decision of September 6th. Tonight's issue is one of the actions anticipated by the September 6th decision, but dealing with it at this time is premature. Tonight is the first time that the public has had an opportunity to address council on any of the elements of the September 6th decision. The report upon which the decision was based failed to point out that any actions related to land division or rezoning are governed by the Planning Act, which requires that a statutory process be followed, including holding formal public meetings before council makes a decision. Also, that report, although referencing the city's strategic plan, made no reference to the relationship between the proposal and the official plan, more specifically, the stable neighborhood and open space goals of the official plan. The requirements of the Planning Act are designed to ensure that when considering a proposal to subdivide land, council is informed of all the relevant facts, including public opinion in arriving at a decision. In section 51 of the Act, extract attached, that was submitted earlier today, requires the approval authority to consider the matters detailed in subsection 24, including clauses C about official plan conformity, F about the dimension and shape of the proposed lots, G about proposed zoning, and M about proposed site plan, if any. Council's obligation as the approval authority is to execute this process properly and according to the law. The consultation session conducted by staff on October 3rd was not a statutory meeting and limited discussion to the issue of site configuration. And although our neighborhood presented a written submission, copy attached, at the meeting, it was never acknowledged or mentioned in report 1633, which was provided to council as a report in the meeting. There was no opportunity to explore the neighborhood's views on the future use of the property, including the repurposing of the school building, and no opportunity to explore the details of land use proposals for the property, or to determine the process to be followed by the city going forward. The method of achieving formal land division is still not clear. Council's motion of September 6th clearly states that staff report back to council after public consultation. The public consultation will not be complete until the requirements of the Planning Act have been met. Tonight's issue relates to the division of land, but it's proceeding without the benefit of the detailed information required to make an informed decision. Some of that information will be the subject of Thursday's Planning Committee meeting on a related rezoning proposal. That proposal is to introduce a 32-unit residential building at a height of four stories and a density of 218 units per net hectare into the midst of a stable, low-density, 30-unit per net hectare residential neighborhood of one- and two-story dwellings. To put this into context, I have included below a chart showing comparative densities. The matter of following proper procedure is of ongoing and grave concern to us, as it should be to council. On the basis of the foregoing, it is hereby requested that council defer On the basis of the foregoing, it is hereby requested that council defer any decision on the declaration of surplus as premature until an appropriate time when all the requirements of the Planning Act, including public consultation related to land division committee and rezoning, have been met. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. And our final delegation this evening is Ms Constance Adamson, who will also speak to clause number 4 of report number 108 with respect to declaring a portion of 671 Brock Street's surplus.
Thank you very much, Mayor Patterson, councillors, staff, fellow citizens. I am joined by several other concerned neighbours in solidarity. I have lived on Napier Street for 17 years. Both of my kids went to St. Joe's-St. Mary's School. Frankly, too much development is planned for the acre and a half at 671 Brock Street. Why is the city doing so much to this very small parcel of land? How can this land be surplus to need when the area needs parkland, not more residential intensification? The city told us back in June it was purchasing the property for a public park. Now we have only 55% of the site as a park, and the rest is tagged surplus and is to be sold for housing. Over 1,000 citizens have signed a petition in favour of preserving 75% of the site as parkland. This is recreational green space that has been used by the community for 70 years. The city's own Parks and Recreation Master Plan states that preserving parkland and open spaces should be a priority and that this includes purchasing surplus school sites for parkland. Our neighborhood is one of the most efficient downtown neighborhoods in the city in terms of parkland per capita. In fact, the September 6th staff report to council states, "Williamsville district has been experiencing and will continue to experience residential growth in the form of high and medium-density developments. Because of most site constraints within the Williamsville district, it has been challenging to acquire any additional parkland through development proposals." Well, with 671 Brock, we can deliver on the need for parkland. If we want healthy neighborhoods and a livable city, we must preserve the little green space that we still have. The Sunnyside neighborhood is a wonderful mix of long-term homeowners, young families, seniors aging in place, and renters. We have group homes, student rentals, low-rise apartments, and lots of renovation. We are a downtown neighborhood that works, and we would like the city to respect that fact and to engage with us. There have been many neighborhood meetings, formal and informal, since September 6th, the day the city revealed and then council approved its plan to divide this acre and a half into the three blocks of park affordable housing and private market housing. There is consensus that low-rise affordable housing and parkland could blend with the existing neighborhood. This would address two priority municipal needs. We know other districts are watching this process with great interest. They are also concerned about ad hoc intensification, the disposition of school properties, and the loss of recreation space and parkland in our city. There could be four schools disposed of over the next few years. The move to establish a school site land acquisition community working group implicitly acknowledges that the process and planning for the St. Joe's-St. Mary's school site has been botched, and council will do better next time. Well, I say this is your next time. It's not too late. The Related Zoning Bylaw Amendment Public Meeting about the four-story, 32-unit apartment building planned for 671 Brock takes place this Thursday evening. Tonight's declare surplus and dispose decision is premature. Councillors, at the very least, consider deferring the decision to declare the property surplus until the entirety of the plan for 671 Brock Street has been duly considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on. We have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none. We do have one motion of congratulations, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Jason Dugan, performing arts manager for the City of Kingston for receiving the presenter of the year at the annual Ontario Contact Conference Awards Ceremony. This award recognizes Jason's skill and vision as a curator of the Grand Theatre Presents program. So we will call the vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions tonight, so I will ask for report number 107 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by councillor McLaren, that report number 107 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer consent be received and adopted. And I'll note that clauses D and G have already been removed due to pecuniary interest.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other separations beyond items E and G? Councillor Neil?
E, F, and I.
So we will add F and I to the separations. Okay, seeing no other separations, we'll vote on the balance of items...
Point of order? That was E, F, and I that I was requesting.
Yes, E, E...
E, F, and I.
Yes, so F and I. E and G have already been separated, so we've added F and I. Okay, so we'll vote first on the balance of items. Item A is a word of contract pickup and delivery of funds for various City of Kingston locations. Item B, parking space license agreement, Kingston Brewing Company. Item C, parking bylaw minor amendments. Item D, a word of contract, single axle truck with 11-foot utility body and service crane. Item H, school site land acquisition community working group. Item J, City of Kingston Emergency Management Program compliance. And item K, corporate radio system additional tower site. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, so circling back, first we have item E, which is separated for Deputy Mayor Bohm. That's the Universal Kingston Transit Pass One-Year Pilot Program. Oh, I apologize. Okay. Madam Deputy, can I see you for a moment? Sorry, my apologies. So first we have item D for a word of contract, single axle truck with 11-foot utility body and service crane. So we'll call the vote. And that carries. Next, we have item E, Universal Kingston Transit Pass One-Year Pilot Program, Ontario Works. Councillor Neil?
Just a question for staff, if I might. First of all, I really applaud this, and I want to thank councillor Holland for working on this for quite some time. I'm just curious why ODSP recipients might not be included in this approach. Do they already receive potentially coverage with provincial dollars? Perhaps social services could respond to that question.
Mr Laban?
Currently, through you, Mr Mayor, currently ODSP clients do not receive discretionary employment benefits through the Ontario Works program. So if we were to extend this program to ODSP clients, it would have to be 100% municipally funded. We did approach ODSP directly and their managers in the Kingston office to determine if they were interested in also partnering on a similar program, and they declined. They do not have an employment benefits function in ODSP to be able to use like Ontario Works does.
And I will definitely support the initiative that's before us if there's some way to include those people who are just as desperate for transit as OW recipients would be. So I would hope that we continue to try to convince the province that they could help their recipients with a similar program.
Thank you. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, worship. And through you, I'd also like to extend sincere thanks to staff, Community and Social Services, Transit Department, and Ontario Works for this incredibly innovative approach. It effectively removes stigma associated with being on Ontario Works. It increases our transit use ridership. It promotes inclusion across the city, and it deals with our ongoing troubles of dealing with downloading from the province and through finding ways to use those funds most effectively to benefit residents most in need. So my thanks again, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item E. And that carries. Item F, notice of intention to demolish 219 Princess Street. Councillor Neil?
Just two very quick questions. Was this proposal come forward through delegated authority? Or did the Heritage Committee have an opportunity to see this initiative? And it's my understanding that this is adjacent to the Capital project in 8, and there will be absolutely no impact on the frontage, Princess Street frontage. Are those both accurate? Comment?
Mr Second?
Thank you, and through you, your worship. So this is a listed property. This comes right to council for consideration. The scope of the property, of the item that's here for the demolition, is only applicable to the rear addition of the property, which isn't a heritage attribute. There's nothing to do with the front facade of the building.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Point of order?
I don't know if it's point of order, but it did also come to Heritage Kingston as a non-statutory or as an intention to demolish.
I don't think that's a point of order. You can share that with council if you wish to speak to it and share that...
Point of information, I guess. Yes, the chair of that committee and the report would contain that information. We did discuss this item at Heritage Kingston as well, and there were no concerns amongst committee members about the proposed plans.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item F. And that carries. Item G, partnership with St. Lawrence Parks Commission Lumina Borealis. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Item I, sale of surplus land to Canadian National Railway, rear of 546 Gardners Road. Councillor Neil?
Yes, it's my understanding, and I'm just curious as to why we're disposing of this property for only a dollar. Is this... would there be an opportunity to put it out through an RFP process for sale? And I guess my concern is, having taught OAC Canadian history in the past, this country has ceded to the various railway companies over the years enormous amounts of property for next-to-no money. And I'm just curious as to why we wouldn't have sought... why this wouldn't have gone out on a tender or why this wouldn't have been sought a higher value than a dollar.
Mr Hugamoss?
Through you, your worship. So two things. One, the history behind this parcel is a former expropriation by a former municipality, the county that expropriated these lands as part of a larger taking to facilitate a realignment of a spur line in order to facilitate the underpass work at Gardners Road just north of Bath Road. What that did was remove two different crossings over Bath Road to consolidate traffic under the railway. What, through the research of limited findings, is that all the land was expropriated, and some was kept by the county, and some was provided to the railway to relocate the spur line. This triangular piece was on the other side of the land that was expropriated, but it was part of the expropriation and intended for a safety crash berm with that spur line as it veered away from the main tracks. It was never transferred. It was lost at that time. It was going back, I think, at least three decades. And it is now stranded and remnant, bound by two railways and a parcel of property. And the railway has agreed to pay the city a fee for the acquisition of land, which is in our standard fees by law. And I would say that there are reciprocating agreements that have come up where land has been not transferred to the city, and the railways are also in a similar situation of a small fee between $600 and $1,500 to transfer, even if it's a downtown property without a full evaluation.
So will the reassignment of this property cost the City of Kingston anything beyond the $1?
No, I believe that the fee that has been granted will cover any of our costs.
I will say, I'm not trying to convince anybody else, but CN, when it came to the Outer Station and allowing that heritage site to become, very frustratingly for the community, to become as derelict as it is, I have to say that I won't be voting in favour of this, just on that principle.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Report number 108 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number 108 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so for the first item, we have stationary Sharps disposal bins for parks and walkways. Councillor Neil?
Just very quickly, I totally support this initiative. I know that the library had a similar situation some time ago. And some people question whether we're encouraging drug use, but in fact, this is purely a neighborhood or community health and safety issue. So I think it definitely deserves our support.
Thank you. Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. These two questions, I'll ask of staff, but they were actually meant for the delegation if that had occurred tonight. And the first one is, I just wonder, have the police been consulted? And what are their concerns, if they had any?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr Mayor. So I obviously cannot speak for the delegation. It's unfortunate that the delegation couldn't be here tonight. We do know that the Kingston Community Health Centre obviously works with a number of partners. And if they haven't yet connected with the police, obviously, that's something that we would encourage them to do through this partnership.
And my second question is regarding communication to the public about what the bins are and, you know, just public information. Would that be the Health Unit? Or, sorry, like the Street Health Centre? Or would that be the city? be the city that would do that communication?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we will be working collaboratively in partnership, so it's not just going to be one organization that will necessarily do all of the communication, but we'll be looking at different ways of how we can get the message to the public. The more we can get the information out there and increase the awareness, the better it will be.
Okay, thank you. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item two, Daytime Services and Overflow Shelter Services for persons who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a question, first of all, for staff. On page, I guess, in the section that deals with provision of daytime services, as this recommendation is looking to assist people who are homeless with daytime programming, but also those who are precariously housed or at risk of homelessness, I was just surprised to see that it says on page 134 that the day service program would be open to any individual who is currently homeless. I was just wondering if, first of all, how that eligibility criteria is assessed for these programs and if it's true that we would actually be engaging with people who are precariously housed and ensuring that they had a safe place to go during the day to move into housing eventually.
Mr. Leyman?
Through you, your worship. Certainly the agreement with Homebase Housing to open up their facility during the daytime hours, they will not be restricting access to the site. Certainly the expectation is that they will be providing services to those who are coming from other shelters or are truly homeless, trying to seek out services. But if persons that are precariously housed would also like to attend their facility during the day, they will not be turning away persons for that purpose.
Councillor Neil?
Yes, thank you. I applaud the fact that we have found funding to help both Ryndale, although it seems to be a six-month commitment. So it continues to give them a high degree of insecurity as far as their ongoing program. And I'm glad that we found some money for Kingston Salvation Army for their gathering place funding. I guess my concern is similar, and I know Homebase Housing does, and In From the Cold does very good service to the community, but again, the lion's share of the funding that's being allocated is going to them. And a concern that's been expressed to me is that a number of those people who are homeless in the community have either conditions of parole or restraining orders that they would be in contravention of if they share the same location as other people that have been named. And I know that that's been a problem that's been reported to me in the past when there's only been one provider for whatever reason. Perhaps you could comment on that? And if you could assure me that the gathering place can continue to function in the role that they've been, because it goes beyond just benefiting the homeless, the precariously housed, the people who have enough money to pay for their housing but don't have enough money after that for food, have received services from the gathering place over time. So perhaps you could address those issues.
Mr. Leyman?
Through you, your worship. I think there's a couple of answers to those questions. First of all, the shelters themselves, as service manager, we have service standards that we ensure that all of the shelters are meeting, particularly as what types and under what circumstances persons can be banned from those shelters for a certain amount of time. So we do ensure that all the shelters are meeting those standards. In addition, we have other shelters that are also open during the daytime hours. So persons that, for whatever reason, may not be eligible to go to a particular shelter would be able to go to one of the other shelters during the daytime hours by agreement as well. In terms of the question about gathering place, certainly the provision of services will be the same as their contract had been since 2006. However, I would like to point out that there will be a minor reduction in service hours because that had been expanded two years ago when we reevaluated the entire homeless system and decided that all the shelters weren't open during the day. So we did expand the hours. Now that it's proposed to have all the shelters open during the day, those shelters are being reverted to their original hours, which will cover all the meal services, which is the main importance of that function.
Thank you for that clarification. So it's safe to say that any homeless person, if for whatever reason they weren't able to access a single point, there will always be an alternative location available?
Through you, Mr. Worship. In most cases, that's true. There are, because the shelters are specialized into family, women's, and general, and youth, there may be circumstances if someone doesn't fall into one of those other categories that they may not be eligible to go to one of the shelters. But in most circumstances, yes, there would be alternatives for them to attend to.
If you could, and I'll bring this up at the Housing and Homelessness Committee as well, but if we can kind of keep an eye out that, in fact, we aren't leaving people in the situation of either breaching their parole or having to be out in the cold, that would be helpful.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on item two. And that carries. Item three, Social Infrastructure Fund Affordable Housing Allocation, 720 Princess Street. Councillor Neil?
Just very quickly, I sent this question in earlier to the commissioner. It appears, and I think this is probably just an oversight, it appears that eight units will have a 20-year commitment, but the other eight units that are mentioned just below it with a little bit less funding will not. Is it the case that all 16 units will have a 20, will have the appropriate period of commitment?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the report speaks to a total of eight units that are to be provided for a period of 20 years at 75% CMHC. That's what is being recommended.
So is there no time commitment for that second cluster of eight units?
Mr. Leyman?
Through you, your worship. I think I should clarify the recommendation clauses. Because there's two sources of funding, one being provincial and one being municipal, the total amount of funding being asked for is $579,000 for eight units. The recommendation clause refers to eight units twice, simply for clarification, because the units aren't tied to a particular part of the funding. So it's eight units total that is being proposed in the report, not 16, because there's two sources of funding. So I could see why the confusion might be because eight is referenced in both recommend clauses.
But they're the same eight?
Correct.
I guess my concern then is that when we work out the actual cost, I know in the past, we've had a position where we've given up to $50,000 for a commitment for 20 years. This would increase that capital allocation to over $70,000, I believe, per unit. When did that, why would that increase be there? Over and above what was the traditional $50,000 per unit we used to give?
Mr. Leyman?
Through you, your worship. Two answers to that question. First of all, the units themselves that are proposed are under the 80% threshold, so they're being proposed at 75% affordability. They're exceeding the minimum 15-year guideline by being 20 years in affordability period. Also, half the units are going to be accessible, which is quite important to our portfolio because we lack accessible units. So there's some significant value in that, that the units are being accessible and can work towards reducing our waitlist for that clientele. The other point is that it's provincial funding, where the maximum funding is actually $150,000 a unit. So in this case, it is far less than the maximum, less than half, actually, of the maximum funding that we could provide under the provincial program for these units.
I still am somewhat troubled by the additional cost of this. I will be supporting this, but I still question the year limitations on this. It's, to me, isn't sustainable affordable housing. It's, but I know how much we need affordable housing, so I will be voting for this.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to also clarify that there have been a number of situations or occasions where council has approved more than $50,000 per unit for affordable housing, specifically when we had, when we were exceeding the 15-year, minimum 15-year guaranteed affordability, as well as, in this case, it's more than 80% in terms of the affordability. It's 75% of CMHC. So it's not something that we haven't brought before to council and that council has approved on a number of different occasions.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Item four, Declare Surplus and Dispose of Municipal Property Being the Market Housing and Affordable Housing Blocks on the Southern Portion of 671 Brock Street. Councillor Neil?
Thank you. I know I'm asking a lot of questions, but I'm trying to make them brief.
You're setting a record, Councillor Neil.
So just a quick question. Why wouldn't we, at this same time, be talking about the parkland or declaring it as surplus? Is it because, in fact, it is already city-purposed? Perhaps you could address that. The commissioner could address that.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the purpose of declaring surplus is to actually dispose of the property. In this case, council has given us direction to move ahead with the disposal of both the market housing and affordable housing component of the property. The reason why we're not declaring the parkland surplus is because we currently own the parkland and we want to continue to own it. So that's why it's not being declared surplus.
But the commitment for parkland as proposed remains?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As per the approved plan from council, 55% of the property remains parkland.
And I did ask the mayor earlier, because I'm totally in support of the affordable mixed housing component, so I don't want to vote against that. I still have questions about the private development that's being proposed. Is it possible at all to split this so that I can vote for the affordable mixed housing?
Deputy Mayor, clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so the answer to that is no. It's packaged as one parcel in the recommendation. So if, you're free to vote in favor or against, but there's no way to separate those two components.
Thank you.
Councillor Hutchinson? Point of order?
I understand the ruling, but is the ruling a function of how the, it seems that's just a function of how the recommendation is worded, not necessarily what can be done. So could the recommendation be amended? I'm saying this for the benefit of the councillor and council. I'm not saying I want it necessarily, but it seems to me if the recommendation was amended, then it could be split in two.
Okay, just hold on that. Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So do you want to remind council that this particular motion is following the council direction? The council direction that's been given and that's also been brought forward, again at council for reconsideration, which failed. So if council gave staff a different direction this time around, council's going against its own direction that's already been provided to staff. So it's a situation where we're actually implementing the technical part of what council asks us to do. We have a policy in terms of disposal of our properties and we need to declare them surplus. That's part of the technical process that we must follow, like we do for all our other property disposals. So from staff perspective, that direction in terms of disposal has already been given by council at previous meetings.
Okay, so given that answer from staff, I think I will say, Councillor Hutchinson, that the concern is that we don't have the mechanism in front of us to split those two components tonight, irrespective of whether you think that's a good idea or not. I understand the point of can you do it? So I think that the answer, I would say, is tonight, no. If you want to split that, then I think you would need to defer it to the next meeting, which would give you the time to then figure out wording, what would be required to actually specify or break that into two components, to your point about an amendment.
If I could just say, it seemed to me from what the commissioner's saying, it would be reconsideration. Perhaps you could get back to us about whether it would be.
Yeah, I'm not immediately sure it's a reconsideration. It's conflicting, but it is a separate action piece, and I think that we have encountered this before. So I wouldn't say it's a reconsideration, but it is contrary to our earlier moves on this file. Councillor Shell?
Just you said the magic word, deferral. I wanted to comment on the fact that the portion of the affordable housing block, any deferral, any wait time jeopardizes our chance to utilize the money that's come from the province. Thank you.
Councillor Turner?
What I see here is councillor Neil just wants to exonerate himself from this clause. Is there another mechanism we can use so he can, he's publicly stated he doesn't like part of this motion. Isn't that enough to suffice and he can vote for or against the motion and we can carry on and pass this or however we want to go?
So I think my ruling on this is that we can't split it up tonight, so the only options on the table are to defer or to vote in favor or against.
But all I'm saying is that councillor Neil can publicly state he's against it, for it, and that's on record, so we can move ahead.
Councillor Stubb?
Thank you, your worship. Get right to the point. We did have two delegations that asked us to defer this because of a different reason, because of the planning process statutory meeting that hasn't taken place, which normally would. But my question, which has just been stated by councillor Shell, my question to staff is if we deferred this to December 1st meeting, would the chance on the funding from provincial, would it jeopardize the access to that funding?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the planning application that's following the regular course of things and will be in front of Planning Committee for Public Meeting on November 17, what it does, it impacts our ability to obviously start the negotiations in terms of the disposal of the property, which we need to do at some point with Kingston Frontak Housing Corporation. So it does delay that and our ability... So it does delay that and our ability to do that.
I guess I'm just looking for a practical increased risk measurement. What is the risk? What is the increased risk that we would miss out on the provincial funding if we deferred this by one council meeting?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know the actual percentage of risk. All I know is that it delays, again, our ability to negotiate, to start negotiation and move ahead with the disposal process so that Kingston Frontac Housing Corporation can actually become the owner. In terms of the direction, that direction's already been set by council, so we have initiated a number of processes to lead to this particular disposal.
So it increases the risk? You're just not quantifying the degree?
Yeah, okay, so that's the best answer I'll get. It increases the risk by an unknown amount. So I guess we, as a council, are going to have to decide whether that risk is justified in order to allow for the public meeting on Thursday to happen before we dispose of the land. And I guess we need to answer that question, so I am going to move deferral of this item to the next council meeting for that reason, to allow for the public meeting on the planning process to occur.
Okay, so there's a motion to defer from Council Stroud? Okay, is there a seconder? Council Neil? Okay, so there is a motion to defer this item to the next council meeting. Moved by Council Stroud, seconded by Council Neil. Debate is with respect to time or place. We'll call the vote. And that loses by a vote of four to nine. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Council George?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, first of all, I'd like to thank you to give me the opportunity to be a guest on the Jim Neil Show. It's a pleasure, thank you. And, well, one thing I noticed in reading... One thing I noticed in reading the report, and it was actually brought to my attention by one of Mr. Neil's constituents, that the affordable housing component and the public or the private component seem to be switched from what we had approved previously on council. And I'm just curious. I read through the report, but I couldn't find the rationale for why unless it went right over my head. And I'm just wondering if the commissioner might be able to give us some details as to why they're shown in opposite locations now, whether that had something to do with the discussions with the affordable housing component, or is it just a misinterpretation and they need to go back the other way?
Commissioner Hurdle?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. On September sixth, council endorsed a concept in principle, which included the blocks of land use, if you wish. Council also directed us to do some consultation with the public from that point on, which we did on October third. And then we reported back to council with the final concept plan in October, which did include the market housing on the corner of Brock Street and Napier Street. And the affordable housing component was changed to accommodate a number of development-related matters. We're trying to make the project work, obviously. I just want to point out that this is... In terms of the Planning Committee meeting that's taking place, it's a completely separate process. And it would be something similar to when we dealt with Seven Right Crescent. We didn't wait for the Planning Committee to take place before we actually disposed of the property. We actually went ahead and approved the disposal of the property and proceeded with that. And from that point on, then the owners are submitting and going through the planning application. So this is a similar process that we are trying to follow in this case.
So why were they flipped? Was it because of the negotiations that were taking place with the affordable housing component? They wanted to be on the corner? Or, sorry, wanted to be closer in tight to the utilities Kingston lands? Because that's where the private parcel originally was, and the affordable housing was actually on the corner. Now they're vice versa. So that's... I'm just trying to get my head around why it changed. Because I didn't see it in any of the comments that came from residents in the area. You know, there were those that didn't want it all and so on, but I didn't know why it's different now.
Mr. Layman?
Thanks, through you, your worship. I think there's two answers to the question. One was simply because from a timing perspective, the affordable housing block was to be developed first based upon the fact that it was further along. So it was best to put it in an area that was least obtrusive to the overall rest of the property while it was being developed. And the part closest to the hydro station and the southeast corner was the best spot for that. Plus, in trying to determine how to have the most the property developed in terms of how much parkland and how much private market block, it was best to start with how much land an affordable housing block needed to accommodate a development of thirty units. So starting from that, we were able to build out from there. So it was easiest to start from that southeast corner for the affordable housing block.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Council Cannon?
Thank you, through you. I guess I just want to go on record and state for... I know that a lot of the other side of the argument has carried a lot of the dialogue, but just for myself, I feel like the direction that we're taking is very neutral and we tried to find some common ground. Recouping a little bit of the money is something that will allow us to do this moving forward ongoing. But putting all of our eggs in one basket and making this whole space parkland wasn't necessarily viable long-term. And I feel like we could have, council could have made this all a private sale or private development. And I feel like we aren't necessarily getting a lot of credit for that. We tried to make a move of solidarity to retain as much as we possibly could. And I'm happy with the way we're kind of going with this. But I feel like that's something that hasn't been said enough.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on item four. And that carries by a vote of twelve to one. Item five, twenty seventeen calendar of meetings of council and standing committee. We'll call the... Council Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question through you about the July fifth combined joint meeting of administrative policies and arts recreation, community policies. Can someone explain why we're... How we're planning to do that, or why we're planning to do that?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The meeting will not actually be combined. The meetings will take place sequentially, one after the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will call the vote? And that carries. Item six, amendments to the Municipal Elections Act nineteen ninety-six, supplementary report regulation, ranked ballot elections. Council Holland?
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I just want to thank the Clerk's office, because I know they've put a lot of energy into sorting out this this change and what it means for the future of our elections here in the city. One question I have on the work that's being done, the enhancements in advance of the twenty eighteen municipal election, there's nothing in here relating to advanced polls, either the locations or the number of locations and all that. And I know when we did the review of the election, that was, there were quite a number of concerns about advanced poll locations. So just wondering if it ties into any of these other areas of work and what might be happening there?
Mr. Wallace?
Through you, your worship. Certainly, the location of advanced polls and the regular polling stations will all be reviewed in advance of the two thousand and eighteen election.
Okay, so I guess it's mostly related to some of the, I think, what looks like really practical, reasonable steps. Since we do have this time, it's not going to be taken up with making the switch over to the ranked ballot system. One of the suggestions is to book the locations in advance, walk through, provide training for staff, that sort of thing onsite. So does that apply to the advanced polling stations as well? And are there any other considerations having to do with accessibility, training? I know that it's mentioned in here, but again, it was, it's a very different situation on advanced polling day when we have so few advanced polls relative to the number of regular polls. So just what, like, any more detail on the work that would be done, looking into those areas, would be good.
Mr. Wallace?
So typically, as part of the preparations for the election and looking at the polling stations, there is a site inspection that does take place to look at things like accessibility, to make sure that the sites are accessible to everyone who wants to vote, that there's good lighting at night and those kinds of things. So that typically will take place and has taken place in the past to make sure that the polling stations are as accessible as possible. And then, as part of that review, if we do find some that don't meet the accessibility guidelines, then we would look for alternate locations.
Council Neil?
Yes, very quickly. I know that you have publicly stated a willingness to have a referendum on this. And I know that our last council, in a rare display of unanimous votes, I believe, supported the concept of exploring this. I appreciate the report and the kind of cautionary tales that this has created in other locations. But I really think that a ranked ballot is the logical step towards electoral reform for municipalities. I'm just wondering if the mayor would like to elaborate on his idea of suggesting a referendum would be a good way to address this.
So I was waiting for my turn in the speaker's list. Do you have anything else to say before?
No, I'll wait for your turn, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair, please?
Yes, your worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I think I'll say a couple of things about the report first. First of all, I do agree with the staff recommendation that's come forward. And I think that the main restriction here is timing. Because in order to implement a ranked ballot for the twenty eighteen election, we need to have a bylaw in place by May first. And that means we need to have consultation and education, a whole bunch of things, in just a few months. I don't think that we can or should move that quickly with an issue that's this important. The other thing that I think is important, and I commend staff for bringing this to light in the report, is that there's a bigger issue at play here. The bigger issue is how do we increase voter turnout in elections? So this is just one of many different potential strategies to do that. There are lots of other things that can be explored for the twenty eighteen election. I know that, from some of my colleagues across Ontario, that one of the things that has been very successful is this vote anywhere. So you can actually vote at any polling station that you want in the city. So that might be something that we could introduce for the twenty eighteen election. I think for the timeframe that we're looking at, I think it's too soon to move to a ranked ballot in twenty eighteen. But there is both an opportunity, and I believe an obligation, for something like this, and that is to consider a referendum. So with that, I believe that the clerks have an amendment that I would propose. So this has been seconded by Council George. So essentially, this motion would look to initiate the process, to add a referendum question on the ballot in twenty eighteen, and then also to initiate a public education plan in advance. So I'm effectively, I'm going to speak in favor of this for a couple of reasons. First of all, this greatly extends the timeline. Instead of having to do all of our consultation and discussion and decision-making in the span of a few months, we now have two years to talk about this as a community. And then we get to engage in the most effective, comprehensive form of public consultation that there is, and that's holding a referendum question. So I think that this is a great way to be able to engage the community. I think it's, this is the sort of question that I think is appropriate for referendum because we're talking about changing the voting system itself. I don't think that politicians alone should make that kind of a decision. I think that's up to the community as a whole. But the other thing is that this sort of question could help to increase voter turnout in the twenty eighteen election. It gets people interested. And not only are you going to come out to vote for mayor and councillor, but you can have your say on, does Kingston want to change its voting system? So for all those reasons, I'm putting this forward and I would ask council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the motion to amend? Council Stroud?
Thank you. So yes, I understand the motion to amend. I understand the idea of going straight to the electorate on a question of importance in the form of referendum. But I think it needs to be stated that there's a couple of assumptions in play here that are not necessarily true. And I think they may be a matter of opinion. The assumption that a referendum question will increase voter turnout is an assumption. The, it's like the million-dollar question. How do you get more people to vote? Well, you give them some reason to vote. It was very clear in the elections in Sydenham over time. And if you look in the past, the years, that there was a student that ran for the position, there were more students that voted. In years when there was no student that ran, there was less overall voter turnout. But in other years, that there was something interesting on the ballot. For mayor, for example, there was higher voter turnout in Sydenham. So it's really, you need to give voters a reason to vote, reason to go out and vote. And not necessarily this particular referendum question is going to do that. Because if you're not in the business, like we are, thinking about how people make their decisions and how councils are formed and elections are held, you're not thinking about this. And you could go out there and have all these educational, this outreach, and still find that nobody's really interested in whether it's first past the post or ranked ballot. I would say if ranked ballot was like jumping out at me as an obvious, like, magic fix to voting in Kingston, then great, if it was jumping out. But it's been tried in other places. It hasn't necessarily had that effect. I think that the jury's still out on that, and it's adding another level of complexity. We have district elections in Kingston, district elections so that you get representative from your own neighborhood, which I think we've already talked about as well, because there's been other proposals to go to at-large voting. And that's been tried as well. The fact that we have district representation and then you're talking about a ranked ballot in a district race when you often have one, two, maybe three candidates. I know some of us here were part of a four candidate race, as I was myself, but ranked ballots would not have changed the result of my election because I won by more than fifty percent. And that's the case of the majority of the councillors here tonight. So we're complicating things possibly unnecessarily, and adding a referendum is further complicating things, and it comes at a great expense. So I'm going to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to... Council Hutchinson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I voted to ask the province to allow for ranked ballots in the previous council. And my main reason was that I thought it would raise consciousness of the issues and the possibilities of making our voting system more democratic and more representative of what people are actually voting for when they go to the polls. And I think that that's what this amendment does. It allows for an educational process. If we put enough resources into it, it will actually, hopefully, raise people's consciousness of different types of electoral processes that are possible and used all over the world. And if we don't... And if we don't put enough resources into it, history suggests that it'll be a big flop and something like Counselor Stroud suggests will be the result. And that would be really bad, in my view. So my main reason for doing this is not for my support for ranked ballots. I think at the provincial and federal level, that's a mistake, and it does not result in proportional representation based on the number of votes received by any political party, which is the big strength of proportional representation. People vote, and their vote continues to have influence on the proportion of seats that the party they voted for in an ongoing way after election day. They get 40% of the vote, they get 40% of the seats. And I think that's a superior way, the way we do it now. In ways that, reason I support the notion of ranked ballot is only because I think in people's consciousness, it may lead to a better appreciation of proportional ballot, proportional representation, which actually is more democratic, and used in 70, 80 different countries in the world today. So I will support the amendment, because I think it may lead to greater public engagement, and at least move us along towards that. In terms of municipalities, I'm not sure how the ranked ballot really works that well, because it's, you know, there's no, there's no parties to proportionate the votes. And I said when I was running on this, that I would support, at least to the extent I had, because the, you know, maybe it could be seconded and thirded out of your seat, you know? But I honestly don't see how that really works in, in a municipal election as they're conducted now. So I'm for the educational part, and people really want to vote for it, well, good. I'm willing to live with the results. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hutchinson. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to this? Counselor George?
I think, I, I'm obviously supporting this. We just have to remember, 21 years ago was the last election held that did exactly this, and the two former municipalities that joined into the city, and at that time, the population was greater in those two, those two townships than the city combined. And this is exactly the way they voted, because it was elections at large in both, and you ranked your, just, you know, your, your, the, those that you thought could do the job for you, it was one, two, three, four, five. I know in the township of Kingston, they had the Reeve, Deputy Reeve, and they had five councillors, and for the council positions, you could vote up to five. You didn't have to, you could just vote one if you wanted to, but that's exactly the way they did it. So up until 21 years ago, in this region, that's the way they did vote, saving except the city, which had its wards. And so now, I, I think it's a good idea to give people that opportunity. I know when, was it the last council that we had an interest from the public about going to elections at large? Or was that the council before? I'm trying to remember. Yeah, that, that we had a number of residents throughout the city coming to us with the consideration of going to elections at large, so that they could vote in that same manner, rather than having the districts elect elections, and you just vote for the individual who, and it's been pointed out by many, could be elected with 30% of the vote, depending how many people were running in the district. So I certainly support this. I think it's an opportunity to give the public to give the future council their direction. I don't plan on being here to, to have to worry about it, but there will be those that, that may appreciate it, and I think it's an opportunity for the public to give their input as to how they want to see their elected officials put into office.
Thanks, Counselor George, and Counselor Allen, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bowman, through you. I ju, just to, I wasn't sure if I was going to support this amendment. I thi, I was, a part of me was like, well, maybe we need to take political leadership and, and move forward with this. But I've been paying attention to the national conversation about electoral reform, and there has been one, which means it is a relevant issue in our city as well. And a lot of people are, want to have a say in how they vote. And our right to vote is something that we take very seriously as citizens, and sort of listening to the mayor describing a two-year education campaign, building up to, and there are certainly groups in Kingston that want to keep things the same and move, move things forward or change things to a ranked ballot, they can get out and help educate the public and help get that message out. As we saw with the no casino, there was a, there was a group that registered and helped educate the public as to, you know, their perspective on, on the casino issue in a referendum. I, I worry that we'll end up with status quo, and, because it's what we know and it's what we're comfortable with. That's, that's my concern, but as Counselor George just indicated, there are many people in the city of Kingston, the current city of Kingston, that remember a different way and may be open to returning to that way of, of election. The biggest reason I would support ranked ballots and why I would support a referendum towards ranked ballots is because I think when there is a competition, such as mine, where there are four candidates and it is a little closer, that the constituency can know that there's a decent amount of support behind that person. Using the ranked ballot system, you have to go into a runoff to get 50% support, and so I think that that's really important, because you can't negative campaign, you can't, we don't have a lot of that in Kingston, but you, you need to focus on the issues and focus on moving the city forward in your conversations. So now I'm going to support this amendment, even though initially it wasn't, because I think you're right. I think a couple of years to really have a community conversation about it makes a lot of sense, and we can move progress forward on fairer and better elections through that conversation. So I'll support this.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? And if not, I'm actually going to ask Counselor Stroud if he would take the chair, so I can speak to this.
Certainly, I take the chair, and I recognize you, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Counselor Stroud. So I'm going to support this, and part of the reason is, is I think fundamentally, when you change any type of an electoral system, it should come from the people. We can hypothesize that, yes, you know, it was unanimous however many elections ago and things like that, but ultimately, this question is going to the people. So if it's status quo, then that's what the people have decided. If it's something different, that's what the people have decided. If it's 51% in favor of keeping things the same, it went to the people. My concern with this is that if we make this decision, it's going to be seen possibly as controversial, because we didn't go to the people when that option was available to us. So for that reason, and noting the national conversation that's going around this, if we arbitrarily changed it, there would always be an opening to critique that method, because it came from us, it wouldn't, wasn't a vote that went out to people. The other thing is, we have the technology nowadays to make these votes very accessible, very easy, and really to engage on a level that we've never done before. So I think in doing this referendum, we're leveraging that ability, and this is going to help engage people and get them out there. So really, at the end of the day, we've asked people what their opinion is. If it changes, that was the will of the people. If it stays the same, that was the will of the people. And for that reason, I'm happy to support this amendment.
And you have the chair back, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Stroud. So Mayor Patterson, I believe you'd like to, closing comments on this?
Thank you, and appreciate the comments from around the table on this. I want to make it clear, I, I don't have a horse in this race, to be honest. I think that there are advantages and disadvantages to both. There is no perfect system for running an election. I think the beauty of the first past the post is its simplicity, and the beauty of the ranked ballot is that there are no quote-unquote wasted votes, that everyone's vote counts eventually. So which system is better? I don't know. Some people have very strong opinions, some people aren't sure, so let's have the discussion. I know that there was some concern expressed earlier about the expense, so, so to be clear, by putting this on the 2018 ballot, there is no additional expense. It would be different if we were having a standalone referendum, but this is just one more piece of the election we're already going to have to go through. The only expense is obviously in terms of the public education piece, but I think that that's a good thing. Obviously, as has been said, this is a conversation we're having across the country, so why not be a leader here in Kingston and have that conversation municipally? And again, there's no right or wrong outcome to this referendum, there's no outcome that's good or outcome that will be bad. As was said, the people will have that discussion, and they will make the right decision. And if we believe that they'll make the right decision on, on mayor and council, they should also trust that we'll make the right decision on the voting system as well. So, so thank you, and look forward to your support on this.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And with that, we'll call the vote on this motion to amend, clause six of report number And that passes with a vote of 12 to 1. And with that, I'll return to chair, to you, Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. So there are, Counselor Holland, Counselor Neal, and myself have all spoken to, to the main motion now as amended. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Worship. So on the main motion, the recommendation, recommendation from staff, I'm okay with it. I, I think it is correct, and what your worship already said about the timing, and it's too soon to have to try to implement it. And so the, the recommendation here is that we, is that we gather information from other municipalities that, that do choose to go forward with it, and help that inform us in the future. So I, I'm going to support the recommendations as they stand. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on the item as amended. And that carries. Number seven, Capital Project Status Report, third quarter 2016. And that carries. Report number 109 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 109 from the Planning Committee for council's consideration. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal. That report number 109 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one item approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 27 Pine Street. Do we need to revote on that, or are we, so just one person, or just waiting for one person to vote? Counselor Kennedy, did you sign out?
I did.
So please vote. And that carries. Report number 110 from Heritage Kingston.
Thanks, Your Worship. I rise now to submit report number 110 from Heritage Kingston, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Shell, for the council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor, Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shell. That report number 110 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay, so we'll vote on both items together. And that carries. We have nothing from committee of the whole. We have a few information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, New Ontario Early Years Child and Family Centers Service Manager Responsibilities. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Worship. I do have a couple of questions, one to do with process, one just, first of all, for some clarification on some of what's involved as far as having, being involved in managing what are currently very separate programs. What is our ability at this point in this sort of initial stages to discuss some of the, the needs of the, of the groups involved? Like, for example, any specific needs? Better Beginnings, for example, the work that they do is very different than the work that an early childhood education program would offer. So I know that everybody's involved in these discussions across the province, but I'm just curious about our own local needs and how we can have those reflected in this process.
Mr. Lehman?
Through you, Worship. I think certainly one of the biggest elements of this is a public consultation and a broad consultation process, and we are just in the infancy of developing what that's going to be. Other than our staff going around to all the existing programs, we haven't gone beyond that yet, but we'll be doing as extensive a consultation process as possible to determine what the needs are in the community, and, and how we should best address those needs, both from a data perspective, as to the province tracks all the performance of children as they move through the system, but also where programs should be, how much of a program should be in each location in the city, as well as who will be providing that. So those are some of the big questions that we'll be consulting on.
Thank you, and that answers my second question. Thanks very much.
Okay, number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of September 2016. Third quarter operating budget status report for 2016. Number four, Cataracway Bay wastewater treatment plant budget. Number five, 2016 Ball Diamond Maintenance Program update. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business. We have one motion that, as requested by Kingston Partners for a Safe Community, that council proclaimed November 16th, 2016, as National Day of Remembrance for Road Crash Victims in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. And that carries. Onto new motions. Number one, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Stroud. Whereas Williamsville District currently has the lowest parkland per capita ratio in Kingston, and whereas even with the acquisition of 671 Brock Street, the local residents remain concerned about having adequate green space at that location, and whereas Churchill Park, adjacent across Napier Street from 671 Brock Street, is primarily occupied by permanent natural features with no open space for ballgames and other play areas for children, and whereas the proposed housing developments on 671 Brock Street would need adequate parking, and whereas the current use of the block of Napier Street from Mack Street to Brock Street is that of a secondary road with low traffic volume, therefore be it resolved that staff examine the implications to traffic and local residents on closing that one block of Napier Street to motor vehicle traffic only, and report back in Q1 2017 with options that would increase the amount of parkland space as well as parking space for potential housing nearby. Counselor Neal?
Yes, just a reminder, this motion does not, all this motion does is ask staff to explore this as a potential option. I'd like to ask staff if, what would be foreseen as public consultation that would, would be involved within this process should this motion pass, and which other departments? And which other departments would we be seeking information from? Logically, traffic engineers, utilities Kingston, but what other departments would be consulted?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we haven't yet developed a consultation plan, but obviously we would target and focus residents in the area in terms of getting input and feedback on the potential implications and impact. As far as the departments, I think councillor, you've named probably the, the main departments that we would work with and reach out to. Parking services, utilities, traffic, engineering, those are going to be the, the services that we are going to be working with.
Thank you. And I, I know that we've received a number of emails primarily in support of this. I believe we received one email in opposition, but the vast majority, particularly of people within the community, have sent us emails supporting this initiative. I also, like all of my best ideas, this wasn't my idea, I have to fess up. It came from a longtime resident of the Williamsville District who pointed out that in the 1950s, what is now one of our premier parks, Victoria Park in fact, was split in half with Front Neck, with Front Neck Street, and that the closure of that street allowed for a much more, a greater green space, greater activities can take place within that. So, all that this motion is seeking to do is explore that with full consultation of the neighborhood to allow that to happen. And so I sincerely hope that we can support this request for, for an initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stroud.
Thanks, Your Worship. And thank you councillor Neil for tell, for also explaining, we spoke about this a while ago and you mentioned the idea. I heard it from you, I know you say you heard it from a resident, but, but thank you for bringing it to my attention as well. And, and I hope that council will support it. I'm just going to mention one point, just, it's a coincidence, but I think it's quite significant. If you take the area of the roadway and, my calculations were based on 15 meter width, it may not be exact, but a rough estimate of 15 meter width, and you take the point at the top of the parcel of land that we just voted to dispose of for housing, so roughly one-third of the way along that block, so where the green space would, would start in the new park which we've just acquired, and you measure from there to Mack Street, and you multiply that by the 15 meters, you get 1,275 square meters. And that piece of private market housing that we're just, that we're, that's in our con, our, our concept plan that we've already spoken about tonight, is 1,268 meters, I believe. It's a coincidence, but basically what that means is even if the first third of the block was reserved for parking, and this is just hypothetical, the remaining green space, if, if added as green space, would be almost exactly the same as the, the piece that we're selling, putting on the private market. Therefore, achieving the request from the petition of 1,000 signatures of 75% green space on the site in, in the sense of total area, not in the sense of that site specifically, but it would give an equivalent amount of green space almost exactly as to what is being sold for housing. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote. Oh, councillor Allen?
Thank you. This, through you, Your Worship, this concept is a great concept, but I'm a little concerned about the process associated with the concept. I think we've just added parkland to, to this neighborhood in this exact area, and, but we didn't add the parkland in the way that we wanted, or some of us wanted to, and we're trying to find a compromise here. And, but my thought is if Williamsville is low on parkland and it has many streets and cross-sections, that the process should actually be a little more inclusive. This may not be the right place to look at this kind of opportunity that existed in the past in, for, that created Victoria Park. And there may be better places that there is less green spaces, and it may be easier to close a road and convert it into a park. And it would be much more to our benefit to do an analysis of that on a larger scale and invest our time and money looking at the feasibility in places where that might succeed in a more clear way, when we have better data and better information to make decisions about where these kinds of parks could exist, where these kinds of closures could assist in establishing green space. This is a very specific, very narrow focus, and I'm very concerned about us pursuing it in that kind of manner. I think there's something to the idea here, but I can't support this motion because I think it needs to be more comprehensive, probably consider the areas that have low parkland to capita ratio in terms of that, and find better opportunities, because I think there are a lot of opportunities in our city for something like this, and I don't want to limit our approach to just one place.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Neil, you have the last word.
Thank you. And just very quickly to address some of those concerns, again a reminder, this is not a completed direction of staff, it's asking staff to explore this. And if there are indeed other areas anywhere in the city where this would be logical, then we, we have piloted, if you will, a, a request and a study that would, would indeed allow that to happen elsewhere. It's logical in this location because we're about to have green space across a very low traffic, underutilized street, right across the street from our garden park, which is not playground accessible. So, so it's, it, it seems to me, and seems to most of the people who have responded through emails in the neighborhood, to be a logical first step. And I absolutely agree, if, if in future there's a similar site, the idea of just going around and closing streets and turning them into one-block narrow parks, I don't think, I think there has to be more rationale for doing that kind of thing. I will say, as the reports have shown, Williamsville is a district and Sunnyside as a neighborhood, both are identified as underserved communities for green space and for parkland. And so this is an opportunity for us to take a step towards remedying that. And I appreciate my secondary comments, I have to say, this motion would have come forward regardless of the configuration of the, of the parkland in, at the former school site, because I think it makes, it's, it's a logical approach to achieving a greater open green space in the neighborhood. And so I hope, I hope that people can support this.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on motion number one. And that carries by a vote of twelve to one. For new motion number two, I will turn it over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. And so we have new motion number two, that the following resolution approved by council in September 20, 2016 be reconsidered, and that was that the application for a zoning bylaw amendment submitted by Fautin Consultants Incorporated on behalf of an eight developments incorporated for the property municipally known as 223 Princess Street be approved, and that the subject site at 223 Princess Street be designated a class four area as per the environmental noise guideline of the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change, subject to a related holding symbol being applied in the amending zoning bylaw, and that bylaw 96-259 of the Corporation of the City of Kingston entitled Downtown and Harbour Zoning Bylaw of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, as amended, be further amended as per exhibit C draft bylaw and schedules A and B to amend zoning bylaw 96-259 to report number PC-16-085. And then in accordance with section 34 bracket 17 bracket of the Planning Act, no further notice is required prior to the passage of the bylaw, and that the amending bylaw be presented for all three readings, a two-thirds vote of council is required. Deputy clerk, could I see you for a minute, please, just on a process question?
Thank you. So with that, Mayor Patterson, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, thank you. This motion is what I believe to be the appropriate response to the findings of the integrity commissioner that we learned about two weeks ago. I think that based on her conclusion that councillor Camden inadvertently breached the code of conduct in participating in this vote, I think it's appropriate that council have an opportunity to revote without his participation. If reconsideration passes, I still stand by my earlier vote. I believe that this is the right project for the downtown. I believe it's important for a city's future, but quite frankly, I believe that the integrity of council is more important. So with that, the only other thing I would say is I think it's important to remind all of us that ultimately it's the OMB that's going to make the decision on this file, but if there is a change in council's decision or its stance on this issue, then I think that the OMB needs to be informed about that, and that would give us the opportunity to do that. So, so with that, I look forward to the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So just for everybody's clarification on a motion to reconsider, it's only the mover that can speak to it. So with that, we will call the vote on the motion to reconsider, and it needs a two-thirds, two-thirds majority to pass. And that passes by a vote of eleven to one. So, excuse me, so with that, now on the floor is the original motion, and with that, I can hand the chair back to Mayor Patterson. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So according to the rules of reconsideration, when a motion is on the floor, we can speak to it again. So council has the right to re-debate this, but I suppose I would ask that we perhaps refrain from that. That being said, I, I would suggest that probably the big question in our minds is just the implications of what may happen based on our revote. So I would ask the city solicitor if she could inform council about what the potential outcomes are based on this revote. Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Just by way of recap, I've, I am, I'm just going to kind of outline how, how we've got to where we are today. So council has advised that the zoning bylaw, as a result of this, was passed following the approval of the planning application for 223 Princess Street. It was validly enacted pursuant to the statutory requirements set out in the Planning Act as it relates to zoning bylaws. As council is aware, there's a defined process to ensure that as much information and opportunity is given to the public to be aware of and participate in the planning process. Notice of a public meeting must be given at least 20 days in advance, an open house information session is required, and if any changes are made, a further public meeting may also be required. After the public meeting process, the matter returns to planning committee with a comprehensive staff report. Following the planning committee minutes and a recommendation, the matter goes to city council for a decision on the zoning bylaw. Once council approves the zoning bylaw, it must give notice of its passing within 15 days, and no later than 20 days from this notice, an appeal to the OMB may be filed with the clerk. In this case, zoning bylaw has been appealed, and the appeal record is with the OMB. Further, to what Mayor Patterson indicated, council is voting on this matter following a recommendation from the integrity commissioner, and not on the merits of the planning application. Therefore, this is a procedural matter. Given that council has voted to reconsider the planning application for 223 Princess Street, the following three possible scenarios could develop on the vote. So I've captured them in three scenarios, if you will. Scenario one, if council's vote results in the motion being carried, there is no change to council's previous position, and the zoning bylaw is still valid and remains. The appeal of the zoning bylaw continues before the OMB. Scenario two, if council's vote results in a tie in the motion, while technically a defeat, the zoning bylaw remains valid and, remains and is still valid, and the appeal of the zoning bylaw is still before the OMB. However, given that council did not reconfirm the original vote, it would be appropriate to update the record before the OMB, and the city would provide this information. Scenario three, if council's vote results in the motion not being carried, the zoning bylaw is still in place, it is still valid, and the appeal of the zoning bylaw is still before the OMB. Council cannot simply pass a bylaw or a resolution to revoke or repeal the zoning bylaw where there is a specified legislative legal process prescribed, as I reviewed at the outset of my remarks. In this case, council would be required to follow the procedure set out for the zoning bylaw amendment under the Planning Act, including all the statutory provisions.
Councillor Neil?
Just a quick procedural question for the city solicitor. Those people who, based on our previous vote, have submitted an appeal to the OMB, will there need to be, will they have to resubmit an appeal, or will their previous appeal to the decision still carry?
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The appeal is still before the board. There is no change.
So, so that appeal will carry over regardless of what the vote today is?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just to check on scenario three, if this loses tonight, the zoning bylaw is still valid, you said, but we would have to restart all of the statutory processes to come to the zoning bylaw again? I, I didn't quite understand the second part.
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I'll just repeat this piece. If council's vote results in the motion not being carried, the zoning bylaw is still valid, it is still in place, and the appeal of the zoning bylaw is still before the OMB. Council cannot simply pass a bylaw or resolution to revoke or repeal the zoning bylaw where there is a specified legislative legal process prescribed, as I reviewed at the outset. In this case, council would be required to follow the procedures set out for zoning bylaw amendments under the Planning Act, including all the statutory provisions.
Thank you. So you have then said the OMB appeal would move forward anyway, even if it loses tonight? That a loss tonight wouldn't stop everything, and, and we would have to restart the whole process? The OMB hearing would still continue?
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The zoning bylaw is still valid, and it's still before the board.
Counselor McLaren?
Thank you. And this is also towards procedure. If it turns out that the zoning bylaw was passed contrary to the official plan, would it still be valid?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The zoning bylaw was validly enacted and is before the OMB.
No, I'm sorry. I meant like, if at the OMB it turns out that it wasn't, like, we think it is now, but if it turns out that it wasn't, would that make any difference?
So Counselor McLaren, are you saying that the OMB could find that the amendment was contrary to our official plan, and based on that could overturn the bylaw? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I think so.
So the answer would be yes. The OMB can choose to decide what they want to do, right? It's in the hands of the OMB. Am I speaking in turn, Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I was just consulting with my colleague, but that's correct. The matter would be determined by the OMB.
Counselor McLaren, do you have any other questions? Okay, Counselor Stroud?
Thanks. So I think this is, some of us heard a little bit about this in advance. I heard something from Counselor McLaren in advance about this. I'm a little bit surprised, but more than that, I think the people of downtown are going to be surprised that the process of the OMB, because it's already begun, it's out of our hands, and it really doesn't matter, the reconsideration that has just passed, and the vote that we were about to have actually makes no difference to the outcome, as far as I can tell. Although I do want to ask one question to clarify what Counselor Shell was asking. Could we, if we voted tonight against the application in the revote, could we then ask for a zoning bylaw amendment to amend what is currently before the OMB?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The current zoning bylaw is before the OMB. If council chose to go through the Planning Act processes for an amendment to the bylaw, that matter would not immediately be in front of the board. It would have to go through the entire process to determine whether it would end up there as well.
Okay, I'm just going to jump, though, on Counselor Stroud's question, because I think it's a good one. So we have the current bylaw before the OMB, but if, I'll give you back the floor if I can, but is it not true that council could, so if this was to lose outright, that council could pass a motion to initiate a new zoning bylaw amendment, and if that passed, would that not render then the current bylaw moot? So effectively, we could then override that?
Mayor Patterson, may I request that you repeat the question, please?
Sure. So I think just, I just wanted to get clarification from Counselor Stroud's question. So Counselor Stroud is trying to understand, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if the motion before us was to lose outright, could council initiate a new bylaw amendment, and if it then went through that process, and then council passed that bylaw amendment, would that then not overturn or supersede the bylaw that's before the OMB right now?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. A couple of points with respect to Counselor Stroud's question. I just want to reiterate that the Ontario Municipal Board is obliged to look at all the material that was before council in terms of making its decision when it considers a zoning bylaw. Secondly, I would add that if the motion was lost outright, and council wanted to initiate a new bylaw amendment, which I believe Counselor Stroud indicated would supersede the first one, that we would have a situation where the current bylaw is before the board, and the board would have to make a determination as to the second matter, if I have that correct?
I'm not, I didn't go to law school, so I'm only thinking in terms of what I know from logic and from being involved as a participant in legal cases. But I imagine a situation where perhaps the one side or the other at the appeal, their legal counsel moves a motion to dismiss the matter based on new evidence, that new evidence being a new vote of council that created a new zoning bylaw amendment that was contrary to the zoning bylaw amendment that was before the board. Is that a possible legal scenario?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. There have been, I am aware of at least one case where a council had a zoning bylaw and then moved to enact a new zoning bylaw, and that all of those matters were put before the board, and the board had to make a determination based on the facts and what council had before it. I couldn't speak on behalf of the board, but they do have jurisprudence in this particular point.
Okay, so my understanding from these answers is that the vote tonight does matter, and that we do have the option of going through a new zoning bylaw amendment process and a new planning process, which would be the logical conclusion if this vote fails. And in other words, consider it separate from the OMB appeal for a minute, because the fact that it's before the OMB doesn't prevent us from voting tonight. And the question is, well, why would we vote if it doesn't make any difference? Well, I think the answer has made it clear it does make a difference, because we can enact a new zoning bylaw amendment. The OMB would then have it as well, and its context as well, and it would be new evidence, and they would make their ruling based on that. And I think the absence of one of our members is the key difference in the two votes, and I think that this is our opportunity to make new arguments on why we like or would not like it. So because I'm running out of time, I'm just going to say that I believe that the developer could have reached consensus with or without Counselor Cannon if there'd been further changes made to the application, and they chose to sort of hold the line, we're not going any lower, 15 stories, we're not going any lower. That choice has now seen it appeal to the OMB. It's the major sticking point, and it's what's in conflict in the most blatant way with the official plan. And I believe that if the developer were to resubmit a different proposal at a more reasonable height, or with slight other changes that made it more, could gather the support of another voter or two around council, we would have a win-win, because we would have then an application that passed, it would go with a new zoning bylaw amendment, and the board may very well find that that new zoning bylaw amendment is preferable to what came to them from the initial vote. So that's what I'm encouraging council to do tonight, to vote against this application, because it's flawed, and we don't need to go into the reasons again. We stated them very well last time, but if you like, go for it. It's flawed, we can do better, and we can increase the economy of the downtown and get more people living downtown, and while still respecting our official plan and while still doing it, we can find that sweet spot, similar to the Anna Lane, maybe a little bit bigger. All we need is a little bit of cooperation from the developer, and they may seek to do this, or if they find that they may get council's support. I certainly would love to support something rather than impose something that's flawed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholson, did you have something to add?
Yes, through you, Mayor Patterson. I just wanted to add that the, I just didn't want it to be unclear that the vote opens the whole renegotiation process again. I think it's important to stress the zoning bylaw that we have is still valid, and that you do have to go the procedural process of the Planning Act. So I just want to make sure that was very clear with respect to any possible amendment. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Yes, Your Worship, and I recognize you.
I'm not really, I'm not going to make any more comments. It's just a couple of questions of clarification. Just, this is complex, and I think it's important that everyone around the table understands this. So my understanding is that if we revote and it loses, then the OMB will be informed, and that that could be a piece then that could affect their decision on whether or not to uphold the appeal, regardless of whether it's a loss on a tie or an outright loss. Either way, we would inform the OMB of this new vote. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. We would advise the OMB that we needed to update the record provided by the city. Correct?
So the only difference between losing on a tie and an outright loss is that an outright loss provides the option to initiate a new zoning bylaw amendment, should council choose to do that. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Sorry, I'll return the chair to you there.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
Okay, I don't want to beat the dead, the horse too dead, but the difference between option two and option three, is that just the difference between a tie vote and an outright defeat?
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. That's correct.
Okay, so that's clarifying. And does the status before the OMB of the appellants who appealed to the OMB be affected by this, either one of those vote results?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. As indicated, we provide the record to the OMB. I believe the OMB would need to rule on the status of the parties.
They would have to make a decision on that?
Yes.
Okay, I find that passingly odd, but because I would thought if you appealed it and you brought it, it really doesn't matter how we vote. Their appeal is at the OMB, and we're here. We tell them, that's what we did. Take it into account as you will. And essentially, that's where we're at, right?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. That's correct.
Okay, so I don't know why the status of the appellants before the OMB would not remain the same as it was before we did the reconsideration.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Let me clarify that if the board, it would be up to the board to rule if they felt that there was any change with respect to the status of the appellants.
So that's fair enough, because what you're saying is, they have a complete jurisdiction. They'll decide. Okay, so, fair enough. I got the answers I needed to. I think we went through all the arguments before. The mayor and I discussed this afterwards, a couple of weeks later, a week or 10 days, and it really boils down to if the, all the arguments, one side is for more stories and the other side is for fewer, and of course, there's massing and setback and scale aspects to do with that, and really boils down to how important do you think heritage and historical values are, and within the context of the number of stories, and whether it enhances the city and makes what your vision of economic development is. To me, some of the business community wants more people to buy more things, and to me, it threatens our tourism industry, because it's too high and affects the historical and heritage value of the downtown, and affects the surrounding neighborhoods as well, of course, but the two together. I think the point is that people say we have a very successful downtown. Why? Because we have preserved those things, and because thousands, tens of thousands of people come for purposes of tourism. They don't come to see this kind of building. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Senick?
Thank you, Your Worship. Because these three scenarios we just heard are so complex, I'm just wondering, couldn't we have received them earlier today so that we could have read them rather than just listen to them and try to understand the three scenarios better?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I certainly would agree. They are very complex. It took some work to figure out what the scenarios were.
Okay, so with that, we will vote on the application for a zoning bylaw amendment for 223 Princess Street. Please vote. And that loses on a tie. Onto new motion number three. Again, I'll hand it over to the deputy mayor, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. So moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, whereas Kingston City Council has received the Integrity Commissioner report outlining the findings of her independent investigation into whether Counselor Adam Cannon breached the Code of Conduct for members of council, with respect to the development application for 223 Princess Street, known as the Capital Condominium Project, and whereas the Integrity Commissioner found that Counselor Cannon inadvertently breached Section 2.4(c) of the Code of Conduct despite following the proper course of action as suggested by staff, and whereas the findings raise concerns that existing policies and procedures for dealing with conflicts of interest are insufficient, and the axioms that should be undertaken by members of council to avoid conflicts of interest require clarity and education, and whereas the Integrity Commissioner suggests a transparent method for proactively addressing complaints from the public is required, writing, "It would be useful for the City of Kingston to create a more robust ethics framework that included information online for citizens to know where and how the Code of Conduct complaints may be made," and, "Whereas the findings further demonstrate the need for the retention of an Integrity Commissioner who would be available at the request of council and at times to provide valuable, independent, and arms-length assessments when a conflict of interest question arises. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to conduct a full report of the policies and procedures related to conflict of interest in the Code of Conduct for members of council, and present changes that will clearly identify the actions that should be undertaken by members of council to avoid conflicts of interest, and that staff engage the expertise of the Integrity Commissioner hired to conduct this, the September 20, 2016 investigation, Janet Leaper, to support this review, and that staff recommend a transparent method for receiving and addressing complaints related to potential breaches of the Code of Conduct received from the public, and that staff report back to council with recommendations and implementation plan, including an education plan for both members of council and the public by quarter one, 2017, and that staff initiate the process to retain an Integrity Commissioner on an ongoing basis."
Mayor Patterson, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you very much. I think what's clear from this circumstance around the capital vote is that there's a much larger issue at play. I'm sure you all remember the very first orientation session that we had as a council. So you come in in November before you've actually even officially taken office in December. We get a number of briefings from staff about how the city works, but if I'm not mistaken, the very first briefing that we get is from the clerk and from the city solicitor talking about conflict of interest, because it's an important concern for all of us around this table. The system that we have had in place for years, certainly as long as I think any of us have been around, is that if you have a potential conflict of interest, you are supposed to consult an outside lawyer, get a legal opinion, and that legal opinion then guides you whether or not you should vote on a particular matter. The concern that I have is that the Integrity Commissioner found that Counselor Cannon followed that exact process, but she still felt that based on her Code of Conduct, he had a conflict of interest. So that tells me that the system that we have in place did not work, and if it didn't work for Counselor Cannon, my concern is- And if it didn't work for Counselor Cannon, my concern is, who else isn't it working for? Because every one of us, from time to time, have had to confront potential pecuniary interest. We've consulted legal lawyers, we've gotten legal opinions. So it's thrown all of that into flux. So I think it's imperative that we immediately move as council to clarify and to understand better, if our current process is not adequate, what changes do we need to put into play? I think there's a variety of different options that might be available. The Integrity Commissioner herself has indicated that she is available to help us with that, so I'm just simply taking her up on that offer. And to be honest, I think that one of those components should be retaining an Integrity Commissioner on an ongoing basis. And to be clear, I don't mean hiring someone full-time, just means that we would have somebody that we can go to if these issues arise. I think that this clarity is important. I think it's important for all of us as council, but I also think it's important for the community. And so for that reason, I would ask for council's support on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Would anybody else like, Counselor Neal?
Just very quickly, two things. First off, I support the motion, although I'm, I'm going to look for one clarification. I originally, at the beginning of this term, argued very strongly against retaining an Integrity Commissioner because in my, at that time, 11 years a counselor, there had only been one occasion when we required the opinion of an Integrity Commissioner, and in fact, there wasn't any consequence to that, to that report. So the idea of spending money for something that wasn't necessary struck me as foolish at the time. Clearly, there, we in the last six months have had twice as many of those occasions than I ever had in my previous years on council. So at this time, I will support a retainer for, for an Integrity Commissioner. And I totally applaud the idea of developing some kind of public education and council education as to what is required. The one question I had is, the very final resolve clause, that staff initiate the process to retain an Integrity Commissioner on an ongoing basis? I'm assuming that that would go through the usual RFP process. We would open it up to applicants. Is that, is that an accurate assumption?
Would staff like to comment on that?
Through your Worship, we certainly could go through the RFP process.
Thank you.
Does that require an amendment, or will it just happen?
I, just for clarification, I believe what staff said was that it'll naturally go through that process. Is that correct? Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Neal?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Ossenik?
Thank you. With this motion, we're going to be hiring Janet Leaper to support the review. So does that mean that she'll be available where we could actually ask questions directly to her? And what type of forum would that be? Like, does that have to be in camera, or would it be at council, or would it be a committee of the whole meeting that we would have? Like, how is that going to work? Because I definitely have specific questions for her.
Through your Mayor Patterson, Ms. Leaper has indicated that she is available on a variety of bases. She could speak to a counselor individually. She'd be prepared to come and attend at, for an education meeting. Those can be, there is a provision under the municipal act for those sessions to be held in camera so that council can ask true questions. So there's a variety of formats that would be available.
Hearing that, then I support the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I know what the change is. It's that we now have an ombudsman who deals with municipal affairs. And there have been more than two complaints. This, this is a mess that we're in right now, because the public are using the ombudsman to complain, they're using the clerk to complain. A counselor has hired his own lawyer, which most of us have done, to rely on what is a conflict of interest. We get a ruling from our own lawyer, and then find out, that's not good enough, and suddenly we're supposed to, as a council, step in between two lawyers and figure out which one's right? Wrong. We can't do that. So we do need this really cleared up. I, I have, you know, we, we were raised on ignorance of the law is no excuse, so you can't inadvertently break a law. That means the law doesn't make sense. So, yes, we need that Code of Conduct cleared up, and we need it cleared up fast, because this has put a chill on this council like no other, because we're all sort of looking over our shoulders going, what do I have loyalty to? Who are my two masters? Pretty well everyone here works at a job outside. This is a part-time job. We can't suddenly not vote on things because we work in finance, and anything to do with money, we, we back away from. You know, this is a serious problem. I'm, I'm personally quite upset about it. It's, and we, we definitely need to process, we definitely need to be a counselor who gets a report and, and immediately goes, oh my God, should I hire a lawyer at my own expense because something's happened? Getting a, an opinion on a conflict is one thing that's paid for by the City of Kingston, but now that the ombudsman has a website that's opened this thing wide open, we could all be having to hire lawyers on our own dime. So this is important. I certainly support this. I, I want it done as fast as possible and as clearly as possible, so that we don't have to wonder about what mean, what a conflict of interest means under our Code of Conduct. The municipal act is quite clear, this isn't, and we need it cleared up as quickly as possible. So I support it with those many caveats. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shell. Counselor Cannon, I had you next.
Thank you, and through you. Thank you, Counselor Shell. You said a lot of the things that I was hoping to touch on. One question for staff is, will we be looking at our Code of Conduct as it sits right now? Because there, it is a very, it is very gray, and if you're in my position, I felt like a bit of a pinball getting bumped around, because one lawyer is adamantly stating, I do not have a conflict of interest in any way, shape, or form, another lawyer is saying, I do, for a variety of different reasons, and two lawyers disagreed with one another, which was a very frustrating, confusing process to go through. Nonetheless, I think that it wasn't necessarily the two lawyers, but one of the things that could be, could be the issue is our, our Code of Conduct.
Mr. Hunt, would you like to comment on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in response to that question, the Code of Conduct was developed by council. It was a process that was, that took probably close to 30 months or so to work through. We weren't the only council that were going through that, trying to tighten up the rules of procedure, or codes of procedure. And part of that process was also to try to put some procedures in place, some of which we, staff supported that entire process. And some of the procedures are not, were not clearly defined or tight enough to be able to clarify what the intent was with some of the elements of the code. So it, it's a piece of work that needs to be advanced. Council made a decision probably two years ago, I think it might have been this council that chose to, at that time, receive a report that staff had made, but not to necessarily act on, on some of the components of it. And so, from our perspective, this motion does enable that work to begin and to work with the proposed Integrity Commissioner, and, and one that would be retained on a, on an ongoing basis, to, to do exactly the process improvements that would be required as a result of the determination of, of that, of that body, which obviously we got a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Would anybody else?
Oh, sorry. I, I just want to speak to the, the fact that obviously I really support this. To be totally honest with you, if we don't go forward to something like this, I would seriously question whether or not I even wanted to stay on council, because if there's not someone making a judgment upfront in a transparent way, it's way too easy to make an accusation towards somebody like myself, just based on the way I earn a living. There's very, there's, there's varying degrees of potential for me to benefit in any situation. All of them could, in this particular situation, happen to be hypothetical situations, but it's not just about me, it's about people who are thinking about running for council in the future. So there's probably a lot of people who are maybe in business, or different types of occupations, that may be watching this, or reading the newspaper, saying, I, I wouldn't be able to run for council if someone's going to go through this type of a situation when they followed procedure. It would have been difficult for me to come in here and say that I had a conflict of interest when I was holding a piece of paper that stated from a lawyer who was a professional in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, stating otherwise. I would be lying to everybody. So it's, it's just a difficult position to be in. I think that this is absolutely necessary. Hindsight's 2020. I think that, I wish I had have voted the other way when we first thought of an Integrity Commissioner, but I never thought that I would end up being the poster boy to why we need one. But like I said, I'm, I'm happy to endorse this, and I, I really appreciate Mayor Patterson, Patterson, and Deputy Mayor Bohm for bringing this forward.
Is there anybody who hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bohm, and through you. This has been a very interesting couple of months. And, and I think, you know, a couple of years, really, we've seen the desire for communities and the public to want to hold elected officials accountable, and I think there's nothing that makes people angrier than elected officials benefiting personally from the legislation or from public dollars in, in some way, shape, or form. And we certainly, I think, have policies and have been fairly clear about doing that. I declared a pecuniary interest tonight, because my employer has been contracted by somebody who would be receiving money from the city. That's, that was fairly clear. But there are levels of clarity that aren't, don't exist, both in our Code of Conduct, and I would suggest in the Provincial Conflict of Interest Act as well. I have here right in front of me a case about LRT in the Waterloo region. Four out of 16, so there's a couple municipalities here, four out of 16 regional counselors had to declare conflict on that. Five out of 10 city counselors at Kitchener had to declare conflict of interest on that. And five out of eight City of Waterloo counselors had to declare a conflict of interest on that. So over 40% of the elected officials associated on that major undertaking couldn't participate in the discussion or debate, and couldn't make a decision or participate in the final decision on, on behalf of their community because of the potential pecuniary interests. And that, they range from either owning land on the corridor, to working at the university that would benefit from greater access to the LRT. So there certainly are a lot of people who are stepping out when it comes to conflicts of interest, and there certainly is a desire for those to be clear. It may mean that we need to consider, as a province and as a community, what those two masters should be, or, or if we want our municipal politicians or our politicians to have two masters. It's a very difficult discussion, and it has a lot of implications. But certainly, as we seek clarity in this, I'll be supporting this motion, because I, as everyone else here has said, we have to find our way out of this mess. Our community needs this to be clear. We need this to be clear, and certainly anyone who's interested in being, representing their community in the future, wants to know exactly what they're getting into. And I think that that's the most important thing. We want to make sure that there aren't additional barriers. There's already so many barriers to public life. We don't want to create more through this. We want to make it more accessible. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Stroud, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I appreciate and agree with pretty much all the comments on this item that have happened so far, and I, and I, I just, well, like Counselor Cannon said, hindsight is 2020, but I'd like to say something to the C A O. I think you, as the head, as the Chief of Staff of the City of Kingston, might have had some idea of what was happening on this before it happened, and we did not receive any...
Point of privilege. I don't think that that's appropriate to speak to the motive of a counselor or a staff member about what may or may not have been known ahead of time.
Maybe, maybe I'll have to have a private conversation with you about this, but I, I feel that we're repeatedly being forced to, into a position where, where we are the accountable elected officials, and where there was an opportunity for us to have information, and it was not given to us in a timely way. It was mentioned by Counselor Shell, it is part of this whole issue. And so now we're going outside, this is very relevant to the point, we're going outside of city staff, and we're hiring an independent Integrity Commissioner to give us advice, some of which we could be receiving in-house. And I would just like to say that if this is a mess, that the blame needs to be shared all across the organization and not just amongst the councils. I think that needed to be said. Personally, I have not been found in the uncomfortable position of Counselor Cannon, perhaps by, by luck, perhaps because my job as a nurse doesn't rise to very many conflicts. But if we are part-time counselors, we will automatically be serving two masters, and so when the Clerk's Department brings forward next year, recommendations on, on renumeration for counselors and that whole thing, it very much needs to be taken into account. We have full-time professional staff spending, you know, long hours, working diligently for the city, and many of them doing a very good job. And the counselors want to do a good job as well, and we're spending now a lot of our time speaking with lawyers who give us conflicting advice. So this is the, the situation we're in, and I'm asking this as a plea for help. We need help. We need staff to be more proactive and, and help us with decisions, whether or not they have to do with conflict of interest. I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Stroud. And just a reminder for council to remain respectful in comments and, and not speak about motive or perceived motive. This is, we're going to maintain decorum in here. Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson, I have you next.
Yes, I, I'm generally in favor of this. I just have one small question. In the third resolve clause, the staff recommend a transparent method of receiving and addressing complaints related to potential breaches, breaches of the Code of Conduct received from the public. Why doesn't it refer to conflict of interest as well? I don't know who can answer that. But it refers to conflict of interest in the Code of Conduct in terms of actions to be undertaken by members of council in the first resolve clause. The third resolve clause is talking about complaints from the public and having a process to deal with those. It doesn't reference conflict of interest, and it seems like an odd thing to have dropped on the way by, although there might be a legal reason why.
Mayor Patterson, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. So in response to your question, Counselor Hutchinson, it was not intentionally left out. My reading is that that's implicit in the overall motion, that that's what we're referring to. Complaints related to potential breaches of the Code of Conduct can refer to more than just conflict of interest. Obviously, we have a situation here where there was a complaint about conflict of interest, but there have been instances of other complaints as well. So there's no reason, in my view, why a complaint system couldn't encompass all of the Code of Conduct, not just complaints about conflict of interest.
So if I'm hearing the mayor correctly, it's a holistic review? So, if I'm hearing the mayor correctly, it's a holistic review of the entire policy, not just the section on conflicts, I believe. Is that correct?
I think what I would say is the clause relating to the transparent method for receiving and addressing complaints is holistic. Yes.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Hutchinson?
Actually, no. I think you should add, you should do a friendly amendment and say, "Potential breaches of the Code of Conduct and conflict of interest legislation." The reason being is you can go different routes to get to the same, not necessarily the same place, right? People can complain to the ombudsman. So, if people inquire about that, we should be telling them. That's what they can do. Or they can initiate it, you know, through the integrity commissioner, however we're going to do this. You know? So, I just think it's a matter of clarity, okay? And the two, as we saw, the Code of Conduct can declare, a breach of the Code of Conduct can result in one kind of decision, while an apparent breach of the conflict of interest legislation doesn't. So, we should cover all the bases. That's what I'm saying, okay? And not leave it implicit. I'll make a motion to that effect if that's the way we got to go here.
Okay, so, I'll give you a few seconds to put that motion...
Yeah, I'll just say that under the third resolve clause, that related to potential breaches of the Code of Conduct, and then add the words "and conflict of interest legislation" from the public.
Would you like to put that in writing for the deputy clerk, please?
Yeah, I think they got it probably.
Okay. Just a quick question of clarity from staff. Would changing the wording on that change how this review or anything is going to take place? Or is that kind of already implicit in the wording itself? Does that wording really change anything, I guess is my question?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You know, I think it specifies both the Conflict of Interest Act and the Code of Conduct. I think there's some, definitely some better information around the transparency of the Code of, of the Conflict of Interest Act. But where the real issue is with respect to the Code of Conduct. So, I think, I didn't write the motion. I didn't, I can only comment that, you know, we can work with that wording, given that the direction is to staff to recommend a transparent process. But I would suggest to you that the mover of the motion, you know, might want to describe why it was left out.
Mayor Patterson, if you'd like to speak to the, sorry, deputy clerk?
We need a seconder.
Oh, is there a seconder for that? Counselor Ossanik? Okay. Mayor Patterson, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I don't think that there's, we're not taking anything away. We're just specifying conflict of interest. Now, the Code of Conduct already speaks to conflict of interest. So, we're restating it twice, but I see no reason why we can't. If council wants to restate it twice, so be it. So, I'm fine.
Counselor Neal?
Yes, I think it's a good amendment because, in fact, we have the conflict of interest, which has a number of outcomes. But we also have legislation under the conflict of interest legislation that has a different criteria and a different potential types of remedies under it. And because one does not preclude the other, and I asked that question of the solicitor some time ago. Code of Conduct does not remove the ability for a citizen to go forward with a, under the legislation, conflict of interest legislation. So, I think I personally would benefit, as the public and the rest of council would, if we were able to get some instruction from the integrity commissioner on both of those aspects of Code of Conduct, both Code of Conduct and conflict. Thank you.
Okay, so we have an amendment that's moved and seconded. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to it before we call the vote? So, Counselor Allen?
Thank you. Just quickly, I just want to say I support Counselor Neal and his perspective on this. I think it is clear that there is the Act and it's a separate piece of legislation and I think we should make sure that we cover that. I think the province is undertaking a review of the Conflict of Interest Act. So, there may be developments that come up in the process of this that would be beneficial for everyone. So, it sort of aligns us to make sure we're in tune with that.
Thank you Counselor Allen. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the motion to amend? That hasn't already spoken? Seeing no one, we're now voting on the motion to amend new motion three to add the words "in conflict of interest legislation" to the third clause. So, we'll call the vote. Oh, sorry. Did that pass? I missed it when it went up on the screen. Okay. So, with that, is there anybody that, with the motion as amended, that didn't speak to the original motion that would like to speak? And, oh, Counselor George?
Thank you and through you Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I certainly support this. I'm very appreciative of what the CAO had to say as well, that staff will be involved. More so in Counselor Cannon's situation. I think it's pretty clear that there are some gray areas, interpretation issues, depending on how you want to look at. In my case, I clearly broke the rule. There's no doubt about it. And I hold myself responsible. I don't hold staff or anybody else. We're given the Code of Conduct each and every term when we're elected in. And as many times as I've looked at it, there's still room for error. But I do think that it does need to be tightened up because we need to have specific reason for conflict in there. Or my fear, as I mentioned to the media a couple of weeks ago, there will be good, very qualified individuals out there that could really contribute to the city in the future. And my fear is that some of those individuals may be turned off, as I think some councillors have already alluded to, to wanting to run and take on a position for fear that, you know, they're going to have to experience something that they would rather not have to go through. And it is tough to try and make those decisions when you anticipate that any legal advice you're receiving locally is going to hold firm. And I think a lot of the legal folks out there look more at the municipal act than they do municipal Code of Conduct. And I found that with AMO, when I was speaking with a number of representatives there, their communities don't have a individual Code of Conduct. They act solely on the municipal act and that's it. But I did take the time today. I did, I went through ours again. I went through Waterloo, Barry, Toronto. And there was one other that I found online. They're all very similar. Few little differences, but I couldn't find too many other communities that actually have them posted on their websites because a lot of them frankly don't have them. I know that some of my colleagues on AMO, I actually gave them the link to ours because they were curious to know what we were using here in the City of Kingston. So, I've done that. But I do support the review of this. I believe that there's nothing wrong with having a look. This is how we find out in many things that we do when we bring policies in. It's over time that we find where the weaknesses are and the strengths are in it. And that's what helps us to make those changes that are necessary. So, that's what's going to happen here. And I support it and hope that we'll have an opportunity. And that's just one thing I did want to confirm with staff, that obviously there will be some type of recommendation coming back. We'll have an opportunity at that time to debate or add our two cents to whatever the recommendation may be in order, you know, if we feel it needs further strengthening in certain areas.
Ms. Nicholson or CEO Hunt?
Yes, that would be my expectation. We have not had a direct conversation with the integrity commissioner on this particular motion. But it's going to be a bit of an iterative process, I would expect, because the feedback and the questions that come as part of us trying to find solutions or answers to tighten up some of the issues that are of concern and to introduce appropriate transparency and accountability, that will lead to some amendments to the code. And the code will have to be adopted by council in a proper process. And if I remember correctly, the last one was with the Administrative Policies Committee for several months as the committee worked through the different elements of it. So, I think it really is a matter of getting a start on this, doing some focused education, giving council members an opportunity to ask both individual, perhaps collective, questions in the right setting. And I was pleased to hear that Ms. Leaper is prepared to, you know, look at any type of approach as we get going on to this. And then set a work plan with the ongoing commissioner to develop that so that it brings strength and resolves some of the concerns that you've identified and that have been identified from our current code.
Thank you CEO Hunt. Would any of the three councillors that haven't spoken to this yet like to speak? And seeing that everyone's done talking about it, I would ask Counselor Stroud to actually take the chair as I have an amendment to propose.
I will take the chair and I recognize you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to amend new motion number three. And it reads that the words, and it's already been submitted to the deputy clerk, that the words "and at least one other expert in conflicts and policies" be added to the seventh clause immediately following Leaper, so that it reads that staff engage the expertise of the integrity commissioner hired to conduct the September 20th, 2016 investigation, Janet Leaper, and at least one other expert in conflicts and policies to support this review.
Okay, so you see it up there on the screen? It's a motion to amend, a different motion to amend, this new motion. It's in clause seven. You see the wording there? Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you Counselor Stroud. The rationale for this is just essentially that we have a unique opportunity here to essentially go back and review our Code of Conduct and our policies and also sort of see how that could potentially align or possibly cause issue with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. So, I think in this case, this is simply a case of the more heads or the more brains we have at the table, the better it is to get a truly holistic view of where some of these potential issues could arise from. So, the rationale behind this is simply to have a couple of experts come in, work with staff and advise us, and hopefully in the end, get a much better product. So, it's just a little bit more of a perspective and a different sort of view so that hopefully we can try to catch all these issues that somehow have sort of developed over time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? Counselor Shell?
Thank you. I'm very much in support of this. I was actually speaking to the integrity commissioner today. And one of the things that we started to talk about in terms of process is vexatious complaints. Now that we have an ombudsman, now that we seem to be getting more and more complaints, I asked actually our previous intern to look into this a couple of years ago. Sometimes you get someone who complains and it's not a real complaint. But what, how far do we have to go in the process to address it? So, that was one of the areas that we were discussing perhaps should be looked into as well, that maybe we need a policy, which some cities have, on vexatious complaints. So, it's bigger than just us and the Code of Conduct because this whole business of complaining about councillors is getting quite large. So, I'm fully in agreement that two heads, especially two legal heads, who knows what other things might come up that we hadn't even thought about. So, I'm very much in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I've got Counselor Turner.
Thank you and through you. I support this motion that Counselor or Deputy Mayor Bohm has brought forward. And I think it's good to get more perspectives and more opinions when it comes to this matter. And I also think we need to clear up a lot of the issues that we've been seeing. And I think this is really important that we move forward. And also, when you look at ethics, I think it's important. And when you see perceived conflicts, how do we define perceived conflicts? And I think we need to look at that too. And maybe we have levels of perceptions. And I think when we do the study, we could address that and how we define perceived. So, I think that's important as well. But I completely support this and I completely support the other motion. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Turner. Next I've got Counselor Neal.
Thank you. And I totally support this as well. In Kingston, we have a couple of experts at Queen's, including somebody who wrote the definitive book on conflict of interest and a former City of Toronto conflict commissioner. So, we have within Kingston that expertise. And having somebody share these duties with our current or our recent integrity commissioner, I think, would be a good thing, so.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Cannon.
Thank you through you. I also support this too. Passing this will give us something that our council stands for and that's being upfront and transparent. So, now we have something that'll really be upfront. But we'll be doing it based on policies that have really been looked at. And so, the more eyes we have looking at this, the better off we are. We really, in all likelihood, will look at this once and then that'll be our way of doing things moving forward. We won't be looking at this at every single council meeting. So, I think it's important to get it right the first time. So, to have more than one expert look at this, I think it'll increase our odds of doing the right thing, whatever that may be.
Thank you. So, deputy clerk, I guess this was seconded, it's just not up on the screen, correct? It was just seconded by Counselor Turner? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Hutchinson?
I might not want to send, I don't want to be the only one not saying kumbaya here. But what's the cost of this? Like, we're going to hire at least Janet Leaper. And then we're going to hire somebody else. And if you think they're going to agree on absolutely everything, I think that's not going to be the case. And you're probably still going to have to get a lawyer. So, you know, it's guidance is all you're getting here. You're responsible for declaring your own conflicts of interest. And it seems to me that they're sometimes pretty opaque, though somebody else comes up with a clearer notion than you did. So, what are we going to have to pay to double up on the...
CEO Hunt?
On the advisor?
So, I'm going to take a bit of a guess through you, Mr. MS Counselor Stroud. There's definitely going to be a cost to it. And the cost will be determined based on the scope of work that is eventually determined as a result, probably of the first session with council by the existing commissioner. That will give us an opportunity to determine how much effort there will be, either in the education process or in the consultation process. And then I suspect that as we look to close those identified areas of concern, that would be when the second expert would come to the table to help to facilitate the outcomes of that. So, my sense would be that we could provide the information back to council after we got a sense of what the scope of work would be. So, this is basically just giving us a sort of a vision as to how to go forward with this, knowing that council wants to do a thorough job and get as much input as possible so as to... So as to, uh, as to create a, a path forward that isn't, isn't gonna leave unanswered questions and then cause further and further, uh, legal costs perhaps out of individual counselors' pockets. So that would be the way we would approach it. From a budget perspective, uh, we do know that there's some work that's been authorized here as a result of this last report from the Commissioner. And that will be, will come from, uh, the funds available in the 2016 budget. And we'll try to do an estimate of that with the City Treasurer for year-end and audit purposes. And we will be explaining next week as part of the budget process an allocation for 2017 for some of this particular work that I believe is being contemplated here. I guess the last comment I would make is that there will be a cost, but there could be, uh, greater costs if we don't spend the money now to get it right.
Counselor Hutchinson, you still have a little bit of time left?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Just to remind council that it's nineteen minutes to eleven. In four minutes, we'll have to vote on a motion to extend. Anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? Okay, you have the last word, Counselor, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Stroud. And the CIO said exactly kind of what my thinking was on this. Is there's, there's always gonna be a cost anytime you bring another expert in. But I think the real question is what's the cost of not getting this right? And, uh, one of the things that Counselor Hutchinson said really resonated, which was they're not gonna agree on everything. And I think that's the exact point of why you need more than one expert there. Because one expert can come in and advise you a certain way, and another expert could advise you another way. So having two experts there to kind of go over these problems, let two people who are expert in this kind of come to a conclusion of what's the best way forward, rather than having one person say this, which could get us back into the exact same situation. So yes, there's a cost, but I think the greater cost is to look at how much time have we already spent on this? So we need to spend the money now to get it right and to get a couple people to have a good look at this and really come back. And with staff's help, give us a good framework to move forward. And with that, those are my closing comments on that. So I hope everybody will support this, or a majority will.
Thank you. So I will call the vote on the amendment. And that passes unanimously, and I give the chair back to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for your help, Counselor Stroud. So we now have the amended new motion three as amended on the floor. And again, there's only three people who haven't spoken to it. If they don't want to speak, then we will call, the mayor doesn't want to speak to it. So we will call the final vote on new motion three as amended. And that passes with a vote of thirteen in favor. And I will now pass the chair back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move to new motion number four, first I'll ask for a motion to extend the meeting. Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Ossanik to complete the agenda. Okay. Please vote. And that carries. New motion number four, moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. Whereas MC Townhomes Incorporated applied for zoning bylaw amendment with respect to the property located at 70 Barbara Avenue for the purpose of constructing 116 residential units in seven two-and-a-half-story stacked town home blocks. And whereas the delegation of authority bylaw 2006-75 allows for council to bump up site plan control applications to planning committee. And whereas a bump up to planning committee will provide transparency and allow the details of the project to be reviewed and approved by the planning committee, therefore be it resolved that the site plan control application for seven two-and-a-half-story stacked town home blocks located at 70 Barbara Avenue to be submitted by MC Townhomes Incorporated be bumped up to planning committee. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, um, just a very quick overview of this, this project and where we're at right now. It has recently, the zoning bylaw amendment has been approved at, uh, by planning committee and by council. In case you're not familiar, it's hard to see this site because it's enclosed by Alfred Street, Barbara Ave, Division Street, and it's currently an urban forest. So, the, most of the concerns that residents have raised have to do with the impact of this new density, 116 stacked town homes on an urban forest. So if you can just imagine, um, that's causing quite a lot of concern. Especially because the area is fairly complex in terms of its geography. There's a retaining wall, uh, there, there are lots of sort of grading issues, drainage, things that, that people have brought up. I've had the opportunity to work very closely with staff and, and with the residents in having sort of the preliminary conversations about site plan. But the, this project came forward before as forty-nine stacked town homes. There was a site plan produced, uh, back in 2013. So there will be a new site plan because the, their, their proposal has grown so much. So what I would love to see is to have an opportunity for the planning committee to review the specifics of this site, of this development, particularly having to do with trees, um, shadowing and sightlines. As I said, there's a lot, there's a major grade. So there are a number of concerns. And I think we really need to have an opportunity to look more closely at drawings and at the details of this plan in order to assure the residents in the area that the development is something that they, that will not negatively impact them. So I would ask for your support just to have this opportunity to, to see the details of the plan and have, and discuss them further. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Ms., Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2016-27 held Tuesday, November first, 2016 be confirmed.
Counselor McLaren?
Yes, I sent the clerks a notice that there was an error in the minutes. I'm wondering if we're doing the original minutes or the as amended?
These are the minutes as amended.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on the minutes as amended. Please vote. And that carries. Uh, we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Madam Deputy Clerk, I will ask for bylaws, please.
There will, there will be additional, um, bylaw vote at the end with respect to bylaw number seven due to Counselor Cannon's peculiar interests. But moved by Counselor Ossanik and seconded by Counselor George, that bylaws one through six and eight through thirteen be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor George, that clause 11.34, bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw six three readings.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaw six and bylaws eight through thirteen be given their third reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Just a sec. Counselor Cannon withdraw for bylaw seven. Yeah. And moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaw seven be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. That carries.
And moved by Counselor Ossanik and seconded by Counselor George, that bylaw seven be given third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Okay. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Turner. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.